Good afternoon and welcome to the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee Meeting. In attendance today, we have myself, Chair of the Committee, representing the 4th District, and Councilwoman Porter, representing the 10th District, representing the Office of the President. I've got Preston Lewis in the back. And representing the Mayor's Office, I don't see a representative at the moment. Oh, there we go. I see Nina in the back. Thank you, Nina. This afternoon, the Committee will have a hearing on LO-21-0015 and LO-23-0041, Baltimore City Fire Department EMS Stat and Operations, for the purpose of requesting the Fire Chief to present information to the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee evaluating EMS data and operations. This bill is sponsored by myself, and I'll just go ahead and read in both, so we can actually move through both, given same agency. And LO-23-0041, Baltimore City Fire Department Operations, for the purpose of inviting representatives from the Fire Department to discuss operations of the Fire Department, including apparatus, equipment, hiring, and safety. Also sponsored by myself. You know, this is going to be the first time that we have a fire stat, and we're looking to do these quarterly. I think it's really, really important, from an operational perspective, that the Council have a strong sense of what you, Chief, need in order to succeed, and just making sure that we're staying on track, on task and on pace. We had the wonderful opportunity, maybe a week or two ago, to go through some of the fire training. It's tough. It certainly puts a lot of your work into perspective, and I have a real, real, real strong appreciation for your work already, but it really put a lot of context into the work that you guys do, the training that you guys do, and the importance of your work. So, I want to thank you for that experience, and without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to you, Chief Matts, and we can start talking about EMS stat.
Well, good afternoon, Chairman Conway, Councilwoman Porter, ladies and gentlemen in the room. For the record, my name is James Matts. I'm the Assistant Chief of EMS for the Fire Department. Today, I'm joined with a few people from EMS. I have Dr. Jeffrey Nussbaum along with me today. He's filling in for Dr. Lawner, who's in Arizona. It's an air medical conference or something he had to go to. He's also one of our four medical directors. I'm also joined by Deputy Chief Timothy Cullen. He's EMS Administrative Deputy Chief. And then finally, I'm also joined by Acting Deputy Chief Anissa Sawyer, who is the Acting Deputy Chief of EMS Operations. I'm just going to go right into the slide next, we have quite a few here today.
And just for the Committee, and we're going to welcome Councilwoman Ramos, who's finally joined the meeting. Thank you. Just for the flow of the meeting, because we're going to be covering quite a bit, they've got roughly 90-something slides, we're going to chop it up in half. We're going to hit the EMS section first. Chief Matt's going to go all through that. We'll open up a line for questioning, and then we'll go through the fireside. And I wanted to acknowledge Councilman Costello, who's joined the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I'm going to go right into it. There's quite a few slides from both sides of the House. We're real proud of the advancements we've made with our dashboards, specifically for this, as well as our city stat presentation. The first slide is our real-time dashboard of our EMS community metrics, and this particular presentation is on Quarter Two of 2023. To date, we've had 36,000 incidents, 66,000 responses. Just to note, a couple of our top call determinants are our most frequent calls in that quarter. The first one is shortness of breath, that you see the 1.7,000. Next, anytime you see a 26 determinant, that means sick. That's a very frequent call type. 32 call type is a man down or person down. And then the other last one, 31, would be an unconscious patient. Honestly, the responses to overdoses have actually shrunk slightly in June. They peaked a little bit in May, and unfortunately, they're starting to peak a little bit as well at this time of the year. On to the next thing. Quarter Two, 2023, it was the traffic incidents that occurred. Understand that when we do this, we exclude the highways. We took 95, I-83, 295, 895, and 395 out, because we'd have a straight line up all the highways. The top five areas for the incidents, traffic incidents, remember downtown is always going to be at the top because of the number of people that come into the city. You're also going to see a lot of the Frankfurt up that area, because it's such a big district, so it's going to have higher numbers. In this particular case, our top traffic incidents occurred in downtown, as we would expect. Bel Air Edison, then followed by Sandtown Winchester, Frankfurt at 50, and the Inner Harbor at 42. The next stat, the next metric that we like to report out on, is the incidents of cardiac arrest in Quarter Two of 2023. The top neighborhoods for cardiac arrest in this particular quarter are again downtown, followed by Brooklyn at 28, Frankfurt at 26 because of the size of the district, Sandtown Winchester at 21, and then Waverly at 20. The next metric we report on is Quarter Two, 2023 Sick Cases, which is a very frequent call type that we get. Downtown has the top of those. The one point that I'd like to point out with this particular slide is we exclude skilled nursing facilities. There's such a high number in there, it would flood in those particular neighborhoods, and we took that out to get a real feel for which neighborhoods. Again, it's downtown is the highest at 167, followed by Frankfurt, Sandtown Winchester, Upton, and then Bel Air Edison, as well as Cherry Hill, are tied at 92 calls each. Trauma for the second quarter of 2023, that's going to include the top five neighborhoods of Bel Air Edison, downtown at 15, Frankfurt is tied with Morrell Park, and then followed by East Baltimore Midway. The opioids, most frequent neighborhoods that we respond to for opioid or overdose-type calls, downtown is the highest at 31, followed by Penn North, Upton, Bel Air Edison, and The next slide is our low acuity call. That's the kind of calls that we're trying to target with doing alternative things. We don't need to take all these type of people to the emergency room. Low acuity account for quite a few calls. During the second quarter, low acuity, downtown again is going to be your top because of the people that flooded the city, followed by Frankfurt, Bel Air Edison, Sandtown Winchester, and then Upton at 221. The last slide, that's set up like this, where we're reporting out by neighborhood, is all EMS incidents in second quarter of 2023. Downtown is again at the top, followed by Frankfurt, because of what I explained earlier. Bel Air Edison is at 753 calls, followed by Sandtown Winchester, Upton, and then Brooklyn rounds out the top six at 583. I might defer to Dr. Nussbaum a little bit when we get down some of these. So, what we've historically reported on is the top five most frequent ALS call and then BLS call by the quarter. The top five most frequent ALS calls in the second quarter of 2023 is what you would expect, calls like difficulty breathing or speaking. Overdose is going to be the next one. Two kinds of overdose, actually, they get different determinants according to what they're describing when they do the calls, followed by chest pain. One of those is chest pain when people are having trouble talking, or chest pain when people get real sweaty or clammy, and that will be your top ones. The most frequent BLS calls for service in the second quarter of 2023 are going to be, you're going to see a lot of 26-type calls in here? 26 is going to be, again, that sick call, so there's a lot of those different determinants. There's a 26 for unwell ill, 26 card for sick, abdominal. Vehicle accidents are very prevalent, unknown person down, followed by, again, the 26 card of sick, not alert. Dr. Nussbaum is actually doing quite a bit of work with this. He honestly specializes more in our call determinants, and what we're trying to do is be smart with what we're doing. Dr. Nussbaum, did you want to talk for a moment about what you're doing?
Yeah, I guess we can just add, the call takers can only give, use the information they're given, and we're working on sort of validating how the input from the callers translates into what our paramedics and EMTs are finding on the scene, to make sure that the software we use, which is used nationally and internationally, is aiding us in, or augmenting our response appropriately. So, we're just trying to tailor the response to get the right care to the right person. It's a big challenge. I mean, the 911 callers are not medical professionals, and our call takers have a real challenge, often language barriers. Further complicates things, intoxication complicates things, and just simple lack of information. So, we're looking to tailor the response to narrow the response on calls that we can predict are less acute, and broaden the response on the calls that we can predict are going to be more ill.
The next slide is the call volume for the second quarter of 2023. Just a couple of the highlights. During that, our number of incidents for EMS during that quarter were 42,179 calls. EMS responses were 72,863. Remember, there's an individual incident for every call. There's a specific number, but you might have four units show up to a call. It might be a fire engine, an EMS supervisor, and a car. That accounts for the differences in incidents as well as responses. The next slide is some of these real-time dashboards that we've actually evolved to through help from our partners in IT and our data scientists. This is a real-time display of transports and where we're at with things like suppression wait time, average response time to calls. In this particular quarter, we had 21,000 transports with 66,000 responses. When they say 90th and median response times to time-sensitive calls, that's calls like STEMI, which is like a heart attack, stroke, cardiac arrest, or other life-threatening things. Remember, we've got to watch response times going forward. If you're just looking at response times, if we're doing things the right way, if it's a low-acuity call, you should be waiting. The more serious call should be getting through, and that's what we're trying to get this, this more informed and more nimble response system in the Fire Department. The next slide actually talks about transports and our offload. We have a couple of slides later talking about some offload. I will tell you, there's been some significant changes and improvements in offloads with the hospitals. We'll get into that later. There's been some positive moves. Our transports over the last three months, the high was going to be in May, where we transported roughly 7,500 people. It's down slightly in June in this particular time. And talking about the regional, the regional offload time just this week is running officially for the entire region about 46, 47 minutes. For us, it's about 50. The goal we're working with, with MIMS right now, is they're trying to get us down to 30 minutes. That's like the accepted time. We're finding that the hospitals that actually have a specialized nurse that lays on and get people off, they're doing a really good job. Those people are down at like 40 minutes. The ones that don't, they're not doing so well. They're up in your higher 50s and so forth. I would like to point out that not all hospitals are created equal in Baltimore. The Hopkins system at Bayview and Hopkins on Orleans Street, just last week alone, they took in 665 patients between them. What's amazing is that they can still average about a 47-minute offload with as many patients as they have come through the door. The next slide just points out where we're trying to do the alternative transports. The one thing it points out on this particular slide is we're tracking really close, not only our use with alternative destination urgent care, like University of Maryland and the Stabilization Center, one of the unfortunate things that we're starting to see. The idea with stabilization centers, we take people that are either intoxicated or people that want to have assistance with overdose or opiate problems. The idea is for us to be able to take them there to the right place, to the right resource. The problem we're having on the backend, they're actually calling us more to transport people out of there than we're taking in there, and that's what this metric actually shows you. We're trying to work on that with the Stabilization Center to get some improvements, but we're closely monitoring this. The next two slides actually go over call volume by quarter and pattern. Our average call volume for service daily, weekly, and monthly over Quarter Two, we average about 460 incidents a day, which is up. I like to point out, our volumes are starting to get to be pre-pandemic again. Weekly, we average about 3,244 incidents. Monthly, about 14,000, which again is up a little bit from the year prior. Our peak time of the day is between 12 o'clock and 6 o'clock. The day of the week in this particular quarter is Thursday. Usually, it's Monday for some reason, but it's Mondays are usually the busiest day. Time of the month is beginning of the month, and the busiest month in this particular quarter would have been May. This next slide actually goes over the last three years, so you can kind of look at the pattern. You can see in 2023, we averaged 463. 22 was at 450. Pre-pandemic, right when we were getting pandemic-ish time, we were about 497. So, it's kind of moving its way back and forth. The next slide actually goes over our heat map of our peak time. I'm going to tell you right now, our peak time is still averaging between 7 o'clock in the morning and 11 o'clock at night, to midnight-ish. There's a lot of red on there, so. EMS response times to calls during the second quarter. Our median response time for transport was 8:29, median medic time was 8:21, and median ambo time was 8:55. The next call, the next slide actually shows the median suppression wait time for EMS. Remember, if we're behind, what we'll do is we'll send a suppression at the bridge of the gap with EMS coverage while we get there. Median suppression time to EMS calls is 5 minutes 37 seconds. Medium wait time is 7 minutes and 47 seconds. And I think this is the last slide before I transition over to Dr. Nussbaum. I always like to give where we are with the actual system, that unit-hour utilization is a marker of how busy the units are over the course of an hour. In this particular instance, all EMS units, they're running 65% of every hour. It's a little busier for medics, ambo's are slightly slower. We really want that number down at about 30, so that gives you an idea of what we're trying to head for. In keeping with the spirit of the day and trying to go right through, because normally we would start there, I'm going to transition over to Dr. Nussbaum to go over the clinical metrics.
Thanks, Chief. So, just to reiterate, at the highest level, the call volume remains a big challenge. Simply, the 911 utilization, especially for EMS and EMS-related purposes, is incredibly high. The burden on our clinicians is very high. A unit-hour utilization of .65 is crazy high. I don't know if it's the highest in the country, but it's got to be, it's got to be up there. And our clinicians work hard. What I am proud of, as an overarching theme, is when we're there, the care we're providing is very good, and I think our clinical metrics support that. And so, I think, I really want to congratulate and commend our clinicians out there who are doing this hard work, because when we get them there and get them there in a timely fashion, they're really doing great work. Chief Matts alluded to offload delays. This is something we've been working on for a long time. When CAO Shorter was here, I worked with him in the Harvard Bloomberg Collaborative. So, the momentum on this project has really built over the last six to 12 months. Like Chief Matt said, there's been really nice progress in this area, both because of the pandemic lightening up a bit, and as well as because of collaborations with the hospitals. We now have a policy, the 30-60-90 policy, where it empowers our clinicians to encourage the hospitals to offload in a timely fashion. We work with area hospitals on escalation pathways, because often the ERs are left in this feeling isolated, and the escalation pathways let the hospital administrators understand the burden of what they're facing in real time. EMS and ERs are very good at just figuring it out. Like, I don't know, we'll figure it out. But this lets the hospitals know that they're really underwater and need help. That's been very helpful. Chief Matts mentioned that University now has an offload nurse. That's an excellent addition to the team at University to get the people from EMS into the hospital's hands in a timely fashion. And Mr. Moles at Sinai has just unveiled their soon-to-be-open EMS triage and offload area. They have a brand-new emergency department coming in the coming years. It'll probably be completed, but they've targeted the EMS offload area as the first area to be done. It's beautiful. We'll see how that pans out. It looks good. I remain hopeful.
Quick question. How many folks have an offload nurse at the moment?
I don't know with certainty, and I don't know that they're all staffed 24/7 and all of that matters. University does, frankly, Bayview has nursing staff that meets you right at the door. Union is very, very, very good at what they do. They've really changed the game. The Union numbers are better than the rest of the cities by a long shot, and they handle a lot more of the EMS volume as a percentage of hospital size. They just do nursing differently at Union, and it helps with EMS offloads. No comment on the backend of the care. On the front end, it's helpful. I'm just not sure at the other places.
Thank you.
Just to give you, and I could share this with everyone after the fact, we get a weekly report from all the different hospitals through the state. They try to keep them isolated so that we don't know, but I can pretty much tell what hospitals wear. The graph that I'll share later, it's easy to see, the ones that have the real short times are the ones that have the nurses that assist. When you get these real long extended times, they're obviously not doing it. E-Memorial, as Dr. Nussbaum pointed out, just last week, their average offload was 26 minutes. That's great. You know, this week, our worst offload was, we were at 56 minutes. So, there's worst out in the state, but we're really trying to get towards that. I'm not going to call them out, so.
There's a number of targeted mitigation strategies to try to help with this. Obviously, the ideal state would be getting patients, citizens, visitors, resources before they need to call 911. That's out of the hands of this group, so to speak, but we have a number of strategies that we have been and continue to work on in order to streamline and make these processes more efficient. Tele-911, there's actually an update since the slides were submitted, is really moving forward quickly with MIMS. Tele-911 is a service where the paramedics and EMTs on scene can use an iPad or any device, really, to link the patient or the caller with a physician in real time, and that physician can assist them in any way possible. Maybe send a prescription to the pharmacy and avoid the transport altogether. We obviously don't want people using EMS as their PCP to refill their blood pressure medicines, but the reality is that people call 911 for a variety of things, and if we can prevent them from going to the hospital and provide them a better service, we do. So, MIMS is working with us very closely on getting that up and rolling. Nurse triage line is something that's been in process for a while. The nurse triage line takes the lowest acuity calls, the predictably lowest acuity calls, and has a nurse speak with them beforehand to see if we can get them somewhere else or get them to an ER by other means, other than an ambulance, which just wouldn't be appropriate, though we will provide it if that's what needs to happen. Dispatch reform, we're looking to streamline some processes, as we mentioned before. Talk about requesting mutual aid for specific call types. Talk about potentially holding calls. You know, if you call and say you have toe pain for 11 years, maybe you don't need an ambulance right away. Talk about holding calls and making sure we get the, particularly the ALS, the paramedic units, to those calls first, not forgetting about our other calls, but just reprioritizing in real time, because if you go across the street and sit at dispatch at around 4:00 PM, it is an onslaught of calls, and it's a real challenge. So, we're trying to use data to guide those decisions. We continue to work with heart-to-heart contracted ambulances to take away, not take away, to share some of the lowest acuity burden. They work very hard in the hours they're here with us. They really do a great job of supporting our clinicians. And then, as Chief Matts mentioned, alternate destinations. Alternate destinations are a bit of a challenge. Again, we'll come back to it. Behavioral health diversion is something we've done for a long time in the city. Our efforts continue to expand in good ways, so we try to, I struggle with the word diversion, though that's what it's called, because we're not diverting, really. We're getting people the appropriate care when they need it. We're not diverting them elsewhere. We're getting them to the better place. So, I really struggle with the word diversion, but everyone does understand that. So, we're collaborating with a number of people. We've always been working very closely with the Baltimore City Police. As of, I believe, last week, or perhaps three weeks ago, we added the MTA police to our group as well. It's a nice addition. Behavioral health emergencies, not a surprise, happen on buses. They happen on trains, on light rails, et cetera, so getting their involvement is very helpful. Actually, concurrent to this, Sentinel Event Group is working right now on, through a very challenging event. It's got stakeholders from all areas. They're meeting over at Police Headquarters to try to look at ways we can improve our processes. We also have a collaborator with the Harvard Government Performance Lab, who's helping us, who has experience with how we put calls into this diversion program. Behavioral health calls mimic 911 calls, mostly for the city. The data that Chief Matts showed, this, you see the sort of butterfly look of the call volume. You can see that in this quarter, there were just about 5,000 calls for behavioral health needs. 2,000 of them ended up getting transported by EMS. No comment on if that was appropriate or not. That's just the data. The good news from this slide is we had nearly 20,000 hours of EMS time saved, and that's not just very helpful to our EMS clinicians. Presumably, those callers got the care they needed in a better fashion. I'm an emergency physician. I work at University of Maryland Midtown. Full hand up. We have psychiatric patients that end up boarding for days sometimes, trying to get them into some sort of facility. If we can do that from the streets of Baltimore City, which we can, as long as we have linked you up with the right people and you're willing to participate, we can avoid days in the ER, which is just, it's just such a win. So, the 20,000 hours is the win to our clinicians. I'm hopeful that that also represents wins to the callers as well. Harder to prove from data, but that's the presumption. Overall, we look at 113 call types, 113 different eligible call types. Diversions are lower than we'd like to see, but again, this is a work in progress. It's a very challenging space to work in for any number of reasons. Alternate destinations, this is something that's done, we've been doing for a long time. There was a federal government-sponsored program called ET-3, where they, the federal government funded transports to alternative destinations. That's been done in a lot of places for a long time. It's not been done in Maryland ever until, well, it's been done before COVID, but really took off during COVID because of the funding from ET-3. The federal government has dissolved that program, so unfortunately, that funding stream will go away. Regardless, the Fire Department still remains committed to the goal of getting people to alternative destination, regardless of payer status. We think it's the right thing for the patients. We think it's the right thing, right thing for the Fire Department for a number of reasons. We work, we have monthly meetings with BHSP in the Stabilization Center to decrease the number of transports coming out of the BHSP locations. The scale on these two graphs is different, so it's a little bit misleading, but what I'd like to call the attention to is the trend. The overall trend is up, that we are going to the Stabilization Center, and we are going to the urgent care at University of Maryland a bit more. It's a slightly positive line. And on the right side, you see that the scale is almost three or fourfold higher. The transports out of those same locations are generally declining. As a very clear statement, the patients that we transport there are very resource-intensive, very complex patients with complex needs. I don't think the goal will ever be to get that number to zero, because it just cannot be zero. These are sick patients at baseline. It's not a comment on the Stabilization Center. We are working on decreasing that number to as low a level as is feasible. It won't ever be zero, but we are doing pretty good work in that area. Like I said in the beginning, clinically, our metrics are reassuring, and they're going in the right direction. Stroke metrics, you can see, always room for improvement, but generally, we're doing quite well. We're getting to patients and transporting them in a timely fashion. We're getting the worst strokes to the centers that deal with the worst strokes the best, Sinai, University of Hopkins. They're called comprehensive stroke centers, so we get the right stroke patient to the right hospital. We're documenting stroke scales, and we're checking blood glucose. Those are all important clinical metrics, and we're hovering as high as, almost as high as we can get. Cardiac arrest trends, we're near 100% where we want them to be, and documentation you can see in the bottom-left corner. End title, CO2 is one of the metrics we watch closely. You can see that trend line is in the right direction as well, close to 100% in the last two weeks. STEMI, as Chief Matts pointed out, is another way you can think about heart attack. Again, we're fairly steady to maybe positive in terms of the care we're providing. Again, always room for improvement, but when we get there, we really are providing quite good care. CARES is a national registry of cardiac arrest data. It's used by the EMS agencies and the federal government to track cardiac arrest care. It allows us to, in a meaningful way, compare data across different organizations to see how we're doing. The data here speaks for itself. We do, because we're so taxed by call volume, get to calls a little bit slower, and that's not insignificant in cardiac arrest. Minutes matter, so even a one-minute slowdown is meaningful, which is why we're trying to tailor our approach to move the needle there, to get people there faster. So, we get there a little bit slower, but once we get there, the work we do is quite good. So, USTIN Survival is a methodology of looking at cardiac arrest cases. If a person is down in a nursing home for two days before they're found, we're not going to bring that patient back in the most ideal setting. It's just not going to happen. But if a young man or woman is running in the park and has a cardiac arrest, and someone sees them, we, as scientists, think that person should live. And so, those patients are categorized in this USTIN Survival. The people who we think, if we're providing good care, they'll survive. So, what I call your attention to on this slide, which I, and I think all of us should be particularly proud of, is the USTIN Survival. So, in this quarter, our USTIN Survival was 37%, compared to a system with similar volume in Prince George's County, their USTIN Survival was 17%. And if you compare it to a slightly better-resourced county like Howard County, their USTIN Survival was 20%. Now, these numbers wax and wane. Next quarter, it might not look this good, but where we have good data, I'd like to highlight the good, the good that's there. The other thing I'll point out is our bystander CPR rates are quite bad. We are just not getting people to do CPR as meaning, as in a meaningful way as other counties are. PG County, you know, they're almost double us, 42%. Howard County, two-and-a-half fold. They're up to 50% bystander CPR rate. As good as the work the Fire Department's going to ever do, we are going to rely on communities to help each other, and bystander CPR is one of the spaces the Fire Department is getting into. Public AED usage, we've worked with any number of organizations, trying to get AEDs out there, and also get them on police cars, you know, any sort of police, Amtrak, MTA. These people are just out there with AEDs, but it's complicated going across different agencies and getting everyone there in a very timely fashion, and then communicating it all back. I'll pass to Chief Cullen.
Chief Cullen heads up our population health outreach. He's going to give a good report. We were roughly about 60 days in, we're seeing some really promising results. I want to give him a chance to talk about that.
Good afternoon. EMS Deputy Chief Timothy Cullen. I'll be introducing our newest population health initiative. This new program, it's in addition to our nurse practitioner unit partnership that you're familiar with, with University of Maryland. That's been operational since 2018. On July 11th, BCFD's population health program expanded. We implemented a mobile unit, community paramedic ones, or CP1, and an operation support center, which is a coordination hub for the team. The unit's operational Monday through Friday, 8 to 4. It's staffed by a team of EMS officers and paramedics, usually two to four on the unit, with one EMS officer in the operations center. All five paramedics have specialty training in community paramedicine, and four of the five of those are Maryland-certified CHWs. CP1's purpose is to provide an immediate connection to a resource for a patient, family member, bystander. This occurs citywide during emergency incidents, after emergency incidents, or randomly in areas of the community identified as having suspected substance or opioid use. During the initial operational phase, our efforts are focusing on responding to emergency incidents involving suspected substance or opioid use, as well as roving those areas involving use providing community awareness training. We identify those areas by evaluating data and heat maps that reflect an increase in EMS incidents. When in service, we do smaller-scale, real-time surveillance by monitoring activities, EMS incidents, CAD information, and we listen to our talk groups. This, this way, we have a greater chance of identifying those areas and responding to areas with live activity occurring rather, occurring currently rather than after. Once on the scene, we attempt to connect with the patients, assess their needs, offer resources based on those findings, which includes referrals, leave behind the lockzone kits, and we recently, recently added our fentanyl test strips. We also conduct small-scale community training and outreach, which is done during or after an incident, or again randomly if we identify an area to focus on between responses. This includes handing out resources, leave behind the lockzone kits to community members, families, and bystanders who witnessed the incident. We call this population health awareness, so it's not just limited to patients alone. And then this slide provides an overview of EMS incidents involving suspected opioid substance use. This is where we initially concentrated our efforts. This reflects what the fire department operationally responds to for emergency. The population health program is our secondary efforts to, to reduce the, to help address the opioid problem. We were operationalized on July 11th, 44 days in service. This overview of some of our totals, we've had 835 total contacts, which includes 911 patient contacts and our non-patient encounters, which again is after the call or when we are roving around doing our, our community awareness events. Next slide provides more of an overview of population health awareness totals. 167 separate events in those 44 days for a combined 27.4 hours. COVID vaccinations, we continue that partnership with the Health Department, providing mobile vaccinations for them. Our totals, 1,085 since May 2021. Outside agency program referrals, this is when we connect with a patient on the street. We contacted, we contact other resources such as homeless services, peer support groups, and, and attempt to refer the patients to them. And 311 referrals, this was something that we kind of added later. We are out in the community roving around. If we do notice an alley or something like that, that we can, we can address, we call 311, refer to them. And we've actually had really good success with that. Food and water distributed, the team wanted to find a way that we could address that. Most of the people that we outreach, we can start the conversation by offering water, by offering food. Population health program, leave, leave behind the lockzone totals, this is where we've really been focusing a lot of our efforts. Total kits distributed in 44 days, 1,088 kits. BCFD as a whole, 49 since, during that time period from July 11th to September 11th. It also reflects what ZIP codes that we're hitting. We try to, again, we follow the, the previous data, we follow what we hear on the radio, and that's where we do concentrate our efforts, which matches up to the heat map of where our EMS incidents were. Yes?
I just want to put that in context with the numbers are here. We started leave behind program in 2018. Between 2018 and 2023 before this, we'd only given out about 2,500 kits. In 44 days, they've given out 1,000 kits. That just put in perspective how much outreach they're getting there. The state of Maryland's having trouble giving us enough kits because we're out there doing it. And you can go ahead and show them how, what it looks like, what you're doing.
And this reflects, so the BCFD numbers are for emergency units. They're not always at the scene of, of some of these incidents or, or some of the community events that we, that we address, that we are able to focus on those areas that we suspect a higher use or, or have witnessed a, some type of an incident. And the next slide just gives an overview of our, our general care package. We, we give out the leave behind kits, 211, 311 cards, other general resources that anyone can use. And as mentioned before, we've recently added the fentanyl test strips for contacts that, that with suspected opioid use. We have a limited number of those, so we're a little more selective with those than we are with, with, with the leave behind kits. Again, the, the data that I gave you is a small sample size. Again, only operational for a little less than two months. The data will be coming in slow. We're, we're one operational unit, it'll take time to measure what type of effect that we do have on, on 911 responses, but our overall goal is to decrease those responses for the EMS suppression units by, by placing our efforts here with. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief Matts, and thank you for, thank all of you for moving through quickly. I want to open the floor to questions. I had a few along the way and no need necessarily to go back to any of those slides. Just a couple of thoughts. When we were going through the Q2 calls by neighborhood, I was curious, because we're just looking at total numbers for Q2 by call type, are we seeing any change or trends within the neighborhoods? I think we're very aware of certain hotspots within the city. I think Centstown Winchester always stands out, Frankfurt always stands out, Bel Air, Edison stands out, and they stand out for certain reasons. I'm curious for any of the other neighborhoods that are sort of on the border, maybe they don't typically stand out. Are we seeing any trends or changes in those neighborhoods, or is there any way that we can think about those pieces?
So we closely monitor trends all over the place. We're also kind of fall in line with the target enforcement zones that you'll see with PD. We keep an eye on those as well. Programs like what Chief Cullen was discussing, we go to the call. The problem with a lot of our opioid outreach is always like a day behind. When I give the information to, to health views, we try to real time. They actually have active boards up that show where the calls are. It tends to draw us to those neighborhoods. Centstown Winchester, up northeast on the east side of Hopkins, they tend to draw us into those. If we're not, we're trying to address different areas. Morrell Park is one, we're spending a lot of time down that way. We're also looking at trends in terms of cardiac arrest and outreach with things like that. We, we use the data to drive where we're taking our opioid outreach. The cardiac arrest data, we're, we're trying to get, really get that hands-only CPR initiative, the bystander CPR. I'm really excited about 37%. Normally, we're in the middle 20s, so for us to be at 37% is really good for this quarter. But we're trying to really target that, those different initiatives. In terms of trauma and, and vehicle accidents, we're watching what's there. It goes like this. And unfortunately, the calls with their low acuity, they're always in the same areas. If we could lay quarter after quarter after quarter, you're going to see the same things. And what's surprising, when I look at a lot of the confidential slides, like with opioids, it's always the same neighborhoods that are at the top of those areas. And that's where we have to attract our, our attentions to try to address. That's where I know Chief Cullen, they spent quite a bit of time down in that, that area.
Yeah, I guess that'll kind of lead into one of my, my next questions about pop health. I think it's really cool what you guys are doing, and I think the approach is really helpful and I'm, I'm sure it's reaping benefits on opioid deaths, certainly the leave behind program. I'm really curious if there are other pop approaches to opioids to prevent addiction to begin with. Is there anything that we've seen other cities do or that we know about mental health or otherwise that we can think about to maybe preempt addiction? That's a broad question. I realize it's a pretty heavy one, too.
Yes, sir. I'll, I'll start off the question and pass that to Dr. Nessbaum a little bit, but our program, we did, did just apply for buprenorphine protocol through the state of Maryland, which will assist, assist us on the scene to offer to a patient, start that dosing and connect them to a, to a, a center that'll continue that treatment. Dr. Nessbaum?
Yeah, so buprenorphine induction has been done, just started in Maryland. It's been done around the country for a number of years now. The Maryland MIMS has a protocol for it. We've applied for it. We're working with area partners to connect people with care. A lot of the challenge of this is the connection piece. We can give the first dose of buprenorphine no problem. It's another narcotic, we can carry it, it's not an issue. One dose of buprenorphine is not the difference. It's the linkage to care. And typically, you're linking someone who maybe doesn't have a steady home, who maybe doesn't have a cell phone, who's not overdosing between nine and five. So the, the challenge is very real. We've been working with a number of area hospitals and partners, University, Hopkins, both are very invested in, in this problem and have offered services free of charge to, to link these people with care in the after hours. We're going to rely very heavily, I suspect, once we get up and rolling on Chief Cullen's team, to make the next day referral. It's just not going to be sustainable to staff a person to do this 24/7, 365, to catch that 2:00 AM overdose, but we need to catch them at 8 o'clock the next morning and maybe even bring them right to the clinic. Maybe bring them to the stabilization center where they can continue their care. That is, I, I am hopeful that we can report a success in the next quarter, but we are about to, about to embark on that mission.
Yeah, I'm, I'm glad you bring up the hospitals, because certainly from the hospitals' perspective, I wouldn't be surprised, actually, I'm 100% sure, that we see a correlation between the frequent flyers for our, our ambulances and also the frequent flyers for folks in the hospitals. Those, those folks are often, because they're so frequently in the hospital, less likely to be able to pay, and then the hospitals take a hit. So I, I sort of wonder if there's a coordination, a collaboration that we can figure out, or if we are already figuring that, which I'm, I'm, I'm sure we are. But what we can do to make sure that the data and insight that we have can better inform their, their operations and vice versa.
Yeah, I, I think all, all very good points. I think 988 and using the 988 mental health line is very helpful. I, I don't think people know about it as much as they should. 988 is for anyone experiencing a mental health crisis. Instead of calling 911, you're supposed to call 988. 988 in Baltimore City, because every, this is another like unpaid federal mandate, 988 in Baltimore City, we, we target you instead to a mental health clinician who often links you up with a crisis, a crisis counselor, who can link you up with B.C.R.I. The over, I know you asked specifically about substance use, but the overlap between substance use and mental health is like nearly 100%. So most, you can't, they don't ignore this, though they, they don't, they're not an opiate help hotline. The overlap is huge. And so we offer a lot of help, not before the fact in that, in that way, but during, like pre-true crisis, like when you're on the brink of your crisis, you're supposed to call 988. Chief Cullen, in his slide, showed a number of pamphlets they hand out. You know, this is what you call 911 for, this is what you call 311 for, this is what you call 988 for. 988 went live, I believe, January of this year, and I, most people don't know about it. If it were up to me, the schools would teach every kid about it, but I'm biased, I work for the fire department. I, I think it should be part of our education. We need to teach people that anywhere in the United States, if you call 988, you're going to, it's for mental health crises. In other places that haven't moved as far as Baltimore in this space, if you call 988, you just go to a 911 dispatcher and it all, like if you go to rural America, they can't have two people. We're lucky to have two people. We're even in the RFP process for a specific pediatric line to, because that's a very different space. And so Baltimore is moving in this area. It's all brand new. We have tremendous need. Nothing is resourced as well as it should be in this country for mental health. We're, we're making progress.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that, and I think that's certainly something that Chief Cullen and his team can probably lean more into, just better educating folks about 988. The, the data piece that I was thinking about was really along the lines of being very specific about the 100 to 200, so people that are frequent flyers that we know, that also end up being frequent flyers within our hospitals that they know. And those people, they cost us hundreds, maybe even millions of dollars a year in our time, our effort, our money and otherwise. If we can tip the scales with those folks and actively target them, actively find opportunities to improve their lives, it actually might be transformational for us and our, our resources as well as for the hospitals. And, you know, to your point, that hospitals might be interested in helping fund something like that, because it helps their bottom line, too. Just kind of curious if there's an opportunity there.
So the, the pop health unit, we got to get our legs under us. We're starting with one item at a time. The super user, loyal customer, I don't know what you want to call it, but the thing I understand, too, if, if, the thing that always amazed me is university or Hopkins will say, you know, that person came to me 30 times? Well, guess what? They went 90 in the whole city, because I could see all the hospitals. They're just looking at their little piece. It's much broader than you'd expect. We're going to go after that. We're doing a little piece at a time. We're getting the opiate piece under control. Then we're going to move on to the super user piece. We're doing a lot of outreach and trying to get those, those ancillary wraparound services. The other point that I'd like to point out is, we've only been active for 44 days, excuse me. We're trying to get a sense of what's working, what's not, what resources really aren't good resources, what are, what are good, what's bad, and then report out. I need more data, and that's kind of what we're, we're, we're at the very beginning stages of data with that, so.
And just to echo that, I feel your super user question. When I work in the emergency room, my computer screen tells me how many times the patient is visited. We use Epic in, in Maryland. How many times they've visited another hospital with Epic in the last 365 days? I only work nights in West Baltimore. I will see several people have over 100 ER visits every night, you know, over 100 ER visits. And the nurses call them my friends, because it's as if they come to see me when I'm at work, because I see the same people every single night. We, we will get into the space. I just want to caution the, the hope in that these, these patients are very complicated with complex psychosocial needs. They, they need one-on-one attention from people trained in complex social work. The first step is getting to admit that they, they want care. And so until they're ready, for the, for the biggest super users, until they're ready, we really can't help. We try, you know, every day. I give, I like to make sandwiches with them. What would you, what would you like tonight? To try to get them to engage. And they're, they're just challenging. There's a guy that walks in front of university, he used to walk in front of Midtown. He says it's his job. It's just what he does every day. He just walks the street. And, and we can't help him until he really wants the help. So we'll, we'll get there, but these are complex, heavy, heavy lifts. I don't want to say that what Chief Cullen's team is doing is easy, because it's not, but there's a clear pathway. You have opiate use disorder. What can we do to treat you and to address your ongoing needs? You have all these social needs, very complex, very complex people.
I appreciate it. Thank you, and I'm, I'm glad to hear you guys are thinking about it. And, you know, it'll be probably something we continue to come back to time and time again, but I appreciate you guys looking at it. We're going to start this way with Councilwoman Porter and, and work our way across to Ramos and Cohen.
So Chair, to your point with regard to some of the individuals experiencing homelessness that are a byproduct of mental health clinics, my office has been working on changing the legislative language for behavioral health authorities, because veritably, they're supposed to be providing those wraparound services within the community. And so that is an initiative that we'll be going to the Maryland General Assembly with this next session to change and really enforce, to have some enforcement to local behavioral health authorities, so that we can actually begin to cite and find some of these clinics that are releasing people into the community, knowing that they need those wraparound services, and they're placing undue labor on the fire department and other emergency services as well. So I look forward to kind of sharing what that looks like as we move forward, but that is an initiative to kind of help out with some of the data that, that was shared today with regard to the burden on our emergency services here in the city of Baltimore, because we have so much more emergent services that are used outside and within our surrounding jurisdictions that we here in the city and taxpayers in the city take a major brunt for that, and that needs to be course corrected legislatively. My second question, oh, well, my first question actually has to do with Slide 7. When we talk about, when we talk about Q2 2003 sick cases, can you explain to me how you're normalizing that data? Given that we have large population within these respective areas, there is going to be an uptick in these areas. How are you normalizing these data points to ensure that we are course correcting for population in these areas?
So my guess is they're going after the 26 card today? Yeah, we're going after a specific type of call determinant in the CAD system. The 26, it always starts with number 26, is sick. And that's where they're focusing in. That's one of the most frequent types of calls. It's the most low acuity call, and it's a low-hanging fruit for us. I know Dr. Nussbaum's done quite a bit of work with that, but there, that's the one of the areas we're targeting, especially the alpha and the bravos, the really low acuity calls. They're the ones we should be able to move. They're the ones that should be waiting a little longer for service. That's why, and I'll bring it back to, until better response time, the low acuity calls need to wait, and the high acuity need to get better service. And that's what we're trying to get to.
Yeah, so let me reframe my question. So given that, you know, and I think this kind of flows on upon what the Chair was saying earlier, how downtown Frankfurt and downtown Winchester are typically the top three neighborhoods that we're experiencing in a lot of these kind of data points. How are you course correcting population from these areas? So like, if they're, yeah, from a density perspective. So for example, even though we have Cherry Hill and Brooklyn down in South Baltimore, we understand that Curtis Bay, even though it may not be as population dense, may have considerable amount more calls from that community. And so that's just an example from South Baltimore. But that could be, that could be reflected in other areas in the city as well that are not as population dense as the top three.
So what we do is we try to preplace units in areas. There is a unit down using Brooklyn, for an example. We also have the commercial surge units that assist us. Their house right in Cherry Hill, that's where they come out of. So that way, I can get away with having an extra unit in that area. Unfortunately, when we get to the peak times, all of our units get drawn into an ellipse, essentially, in Baltimore. And that's where we start having people jumping around. We try to move and preplace resources, but it depends on how the day runs, how our available resources, number of calls to, did that answer?
Not really. I probably would need to talk to a data person. If you, you understand what I'm saying, Mark?
Are you asking about, like, normalizing for population?
Yes.
So I think if the council would like to see that data, I think it's reasonable that we could ask. I don't, I don't know that we can, I don't do the data. But you're just asking to divide the census population of, the raw number that Chief Matt's presented divided by the census population.
Yes, that is correct, because that's going to have a different, that's going to have a different layer approach to.
It would be a different ask, and I think we can ask our team. Just, I warn you, though, like, a place like downtown, you know, if you go census population versus nine to five population is going to be orders of magnitude different. The fire department is responding to raw numbers.
To raw numbers, yeah.
For your perspective, look, you get specific neighborhoods, one burden versus the next, that may be useful. We can bring it back to our data team to discuss.
And the reason why I'm asking that question is because when you look at, when you look at how the, how each neighborhood kind of flows, one, two, three, four, five, six, if we're normalizing by population, that's going to have a different spectrum of neighborhoods, which invariably will tell us as far as resources and burden, different, a different perspective of resources within the city based on these data points. So it's not simply going on numbers, on raw numbers. It's going on a rate at which the calls are being dispersed within each neighborhood.
So we'll definitely do that next time around. It's a work in progress.
Yeah, for sure.
For what, 18 months we've been doing this? We're kind of getting refined. I'll be more than happy to go with the data team and present some slides along those lines to be able to look at it both ways, if that's where you want to go.
Okay. And then my second question actually has to do with Slide 11, about all EMS incidences. How do the, how do these raw numbers translate to EMS deployment within the area? Several times before, we were talking about issues with EMS deployment, engines being down throughout the city, particularly those that have one to two, one to two engine companies. How does this translate into how we are kind of really redeploying some of those EMS services throughout the city? And again, it kind of goes back to my point about the rate as opposed to the raw number.
We're going to come back to that. You want to look at the data based on that breakdown?
No, you don't have to, but if you can just share how the EMS deployment for these areas translates into all of the EMS incidents. So for example, if, for, from this, from this, from this graph, it looks like downtown is getting all of our EMS deployment. That's what I'm saying. Are we saying that they are, downtown is getting all of our EMS, or most of our EMS deployment?
They don't, they don't get all of our EMS deployment. Our EMS deployment is spread out based on neighborhoods and calls. Northwest Baltimore is going to be Northwest Baltimore's calls and units stay in that area. The reason we bring the surge units on is to assist us in those areas where we're short, especially downtown. They might migrate north to the Frankfurt areas because it's such a large area. The other problem up there is a lot of driving. You know, what's nice downtown is you can get around real fast. Up there, it's a lot more drive time. But that's what we do, is we basically preplace our resources. If we notice there's surges in areas, we move them around.
Okay.
They're naturally pooled where the calls are, too.
Okay, so that can fluctuate throughout the night based on deployments. Okay, thank you.
Deployments, number of calls.
Yes. All right, cool. Thank you. And I save my next questions for the next round.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Stella, do you have any questions?
No, sir.
Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have a number of questions. I want to go back to, I am really excited about the population health work. I think that's going to be really groundbreaking for us. I would encourage, as you get your feet wet, there's one particular area in my district that I can talk with you about later. The, there's a significant substance abuse problem. And yet, the residents and the businesses and the churches use naloxone. So you're not seeing the overdose data. So I, you know, how, I guess we'll just get you that information, because it would be great to under, to have the residents that are experiencing this get help they need. And without that direct connection, we've been sort of at a loss for how to do that. So just, they're not calling 911. They put in the naloxone, done, you know? So that, I think that might be happening in other communities. Now, I get we want to triage where we need the resources most, absolutely, but just adding that to your sort of filter of things to think about. Relative to the helping with B.C.R.I., 988 and B.C.R.I. are really amazing. However, when I've called on behalf of somebody having a crisis, because normally when somebody's having a crisis, they can't even think straight, obviously. So they're not going to call 988, and they're not going to call 911. There's a police response. They say, call the police, or we're going to send a police officer first. That's not a proper response. That's not the way we want to do it. The officer that came out this one time was trained on how to de-escalate, but it's not resolving the issue. The point I'm making is that B.C.R.I. is woefully under-resourced to be able to meet the needs. So I'm kind of wondering, I mean, it's good to make sure that people are calling, because then demonstrates the need and makes the case that we need more resources. But I'm trying to understand a little bit better about what the partnership is with EMS and B.C.R.I. if they are so woefully underfunded and under-resourced. We want to, we're working, we've been working hard to get them, you know, more resources to be able to staff up, so that we actually can get an alternative response. So talk a little bit more about what that relationship is, if you can. Either way, because it's part of pop health and it's part of some of the other things you talked about.
So we've actively meet with B.C.R.I., BHSB on a regular basis. Dr. Lawner is very instrumental. He goes to a lot of those meetings with them. I have heard some grumbling, kind of what you were describing here about that. We've had a couple, what I was telling you with data, we're trying to analyze our data and see if they say, call Councilwoman Ramos. And every time I call her, she's not there. I don't want to just have a one-off or a two-off. We're trying to look at patterns over time to be able to see with that. B.C.R.I. does sit right at the table with us in terms of 988 call diversion. Dr. Lawner is the one with them at least every two weeks, and they're trying to analyze what they're doing right, what they're doing wrong, and then adjusting to, one, different determinants and different things like that. Aside from that, I don't, I mean, we meet regularly with them. We collaborate.
I would just recommend, Mr. Chair, if it's okay, at the next EMS hearing, that we bring B.C.R.I. also, so that we can talk about this kind of interaction with the resources that they need. Would that be all right?
Yeah, that's good.
Great, thank you. So we'll wait till that happens, and I'll give you some prep questions on that. My second question for this round is, Dr. Nussbaum, you mentioned earlier in your presentation about the fact that there are sometimes language barriers that are becoming a challenge. That should not be. That should not be, okay? We have had this conversation in this room many times. There is no excuse to have only one person speaking Spanish on 911, and I hope by now that has changed, because it's been over a year. And secondly, everybody should be trained on using Language Line. Now, Language Line is not good enough still. So there should never be, I should never hear that there's a language barrier, that there is a problem speaking with our Spanish, with our Hispanic population, or with our African population. That's unacceptable. And so I need to hear from 911 and the fire department and EMS how we're resolving that issue. It's been over a year. It shouldn't have been that the voters had to vote in a Hispanic councilwoman in order to get this accomplished. What's happening?
I can't, I can't speak for the whole 911 administration, but I, they use Language Line very regularly. We have Spanish-speaking callers that get triaged, the same as everyone else's with either a Spanish-speaking call taker or using, using the Language Line. I was just highlighting the multitude of different ways calls come into us, and how the call takers have to navigate any, any scenario that's put in front of them, any, any specific language that's spoken. People in crisis don't speak clearly in English or in Spanish or any dialect. I don't, I don't think I was making, I didn't mean to make a comment on worse service or different service. I'm just commenting on the, the 911 has to deal with anything that comes their way. So I apologize if I misspoke, but they handle it very professionally. They use Language Line. The 911 administration reviews these calls. The ones I've, I've seen the review on, I know that they're using the Language Line appropriately, or as it should be used, and I know we're getting that information. There's just a lot of different, 911's hard. It's very hard to always be.
Oh, sure. I mean, I remember calling, and she did a wonderful job of calming me down in order to make sure that everything was clear, so I get that. But we've, I have been talking about this since I came on. And so if there is only one, and what is the answer? Is there more than one person now speaking Spanish, that speaks Spanish on 911?
Good afternoon, everyone.
Hi.
I'm now on direct to the city, right? At the present time, it is still only one that speaks Spanish. And also, we do use other resources that allows us not only just the Language Line, which is the third party, but we also partner with another Language Line that is actually Baltimore-based. It's called, I can give the name, it's called Convey 911. They're not only in Baltimore City, but now they're also in the public school systems that offers another Language Line solution and alternative, not only for 911 call takers, but also for field responders. They're working very diligently within the Baltimore City area to actually bring this, this resource to them, because we understanding that it is a dying need to actually be able to communicate with non-English speaking. It's not only Spanish, but it is other languages out here that Baltimore City has been populating for over years that we are not connecting with. And we do understand that, and we're breaking that barrier by using this platform and this protocol with them. Not only are they actually giving us the Language Line, but they're giving us ASL. They're bringing AI to the feature. So it's a lot of different things that we're utilizing in 911, like I said, to break this barrier of non-English speaking callers.
It was called Convey?
Convey 911, yes.
Convey 911 is what it's called?
Yes.
Okay, so that's a local company that you were, you've discovered that would provide that service a lot better than the Language Line company that we've been using?
And they're actually a little bit more responsive than we was getting with the third lang, the third-party Language Line. It's, right now, is through the text message feature, but within the next couple of months, we're bringing it, the AI feature. So if we speak in English, and it will translate to the language that their phone is actually registered in, it's going to automatically pick up what the phone is registered in. And then they can speak that language to us, and it's going to translate to us in English on our end. And like I said, this is also a feature that can go out to the field responders. So it's an app on your phone that you can get, and you get the app on your phone, and you hold it up. And like I said, it's using AI technology. What's the next, what's coming up now? So you can speak it in your phone, and that whole conversation can translate back and forth, or you can actually do it through video chat.
And so I realize it's coming through text first. I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, if that's okay, I can, thank you. Just on this subject. So the, the, what, do we know what the quality is? Is it, because we've also had an issue with, you know, Google Translate on websites doesn't actually do.
Well, no, the actual quality is really good. It's, it is. We, we've had other people pilot it or look at it and see what it looks like if they speak Arabic, or if they speak another language, and it was perfect. So if you want, I can have a side conversation after this, and you could actually speak to that vendor yourself, because like I said, it's not only here in Baltimore City, but they're actually venturing out to the Baltimore City School, the public school systems. They're actually partnered with recently 211 to give that language, you know, to give them that access to that type of language capability as well. It's over 160 languages that they're able to translate. So we can have that side conversation, and we can, I can connect you with them, and they can have that, you know, you can open that barrier with them, and ask them more about it, and just see how the products, what, work. Or I always offer, anyone they want, you can come to 911 and see whatever products, whatever software we work, have to actually better the efficiency and effectiveness of 911 call taking.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate that. I will take you up on that offer for both a briefing on this and also to visit the call center. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Cohen.
Thanks, Chair. Thank you to the entire team that's here today. Great respect for the work that you all do and very much appreciate it. That said, we still lose close to 1,000 people per year in this city due to overdose deaths, nearly three times as many as we lose to homicides. And as everyone here knows, it remains a huge crisis for our city and our state. I sat on a panel the other night with the Lieutenant Governor and the Special Secretary for Opioid Response. One of the things that came up is that the state of Maryland now has significant opioid restitution funds. We, the city of Baltimore, chose not to, chose to go our own way in terms of that lawsuit. And I know that our city solicitor is working very, very hard on behalf of Baltimore City. But I think to Councilmember Ramos's point, it still, to me, feels like some of the systems are disconnected and not quite talking to each other clearly enough. I think about B.C.R.I., and like she said, we fought about it in the previous budget cycle to fund them, but it's still woefully underfunded. And sometimes it feels like we're just piecemealing stuff together. And so I would really encourage a conversation with BHSB, the Health Department, B.C.R.I. We have peer navigators in our library system right now. They could be a great resource. I've brought it up in previous hearings. I might actually call for a hearing and just try to bring all these parties together. But I do think there is sort of a disjointedness around how we respond to opioid and mental health crises, and I say that with the utmost respect. But to put a fine point on it, how are we thinking about leveraging and accessing opioid restitution funds as they become, as they come online? Or are we?
Chief, can I start? I'll start, and then I'll pass restitution to you.
I got to recuse myself from that question.
Understood.
I'll have to let Dr. answer on that one, that part, okay?
For the partnerships, before we operationalize the program, we did reach out to the Health Department, B.C.R.I., 988 Services, and we had conversations, let them know what we were doing. The point to make, so the fire department, obviously, we respond to the emergencies, life-saving, provide life-saving measures. The, our program, population health program, the fire department, our specialty is to get into patients' homes, the communities, and start the conversations. We don't have the capability to do case management. That's where we do need our partnering agencies, and that's what we kind of conveyed to them in the beginning. Hey, look, we'll get into these homes and start the conversations, but we need someone to connect them to. So again, we are early in the infancy, and we're going to revisit it, but we did reach out to all the agencies that you, that you mentioned, as well as some of the hospitals for the high utilizers as well.
No, and I appreciate that. I just, I think there needs to be a real continuum, because to the previous conversation, if we're just constantly triaging and going out and getting folks in a lock zone and, you and getting folks in a lock zone and, you know, reviving them or whatever, we're not actually solving the issue. And having 988 sort of work through you guys, through B.C.R.I., through a number of other systems, having it not totally be clear, as Councilmember Ramos said, when there's the need for a non-police response, like, it just seems like there's still room to, room for us as a city to grow in terms of the way we're thinking at a systems level and not just that like a, you know, send out EMS. But I do appreciate what you are attempting to bring. I, I would just push and encourage higher level of coordination.
Your, your point is a very good one. I, I think first, a little historical perspective, fire departments are built to respond to 911.
Totally.
Like historically, that's what we do. This is a very new space nationally, really.
Understood.
And part of the problem is the way EMS is funded in this country. You, you literally only get paid if you bring someone to the hospital, especially with the cessation of ET3, which was the first foray into like, treat, no transport, and you get paid for that. You, you actually, in, in the rules and regulations of Medicare, you have to get transported by a stretcher. Like, that is the, the checkmark to get paid. So fire departments have started broadening our reach to provide some of these other services essentially on our own dime, obviously the city's dime, to provide these services because there's no other mechanism to, to bill for them really. So this is a new space. You speak of systems, that's exactly, we're all part of the system. And, and Baltimore is responding or growing, systematizing. I think at the pace of everyone, like appropriately, the countries just, we lag. I mean, these are complex psychosocial problems that aren't, can't be fixed by one silo. And your idea to bring silos together is important. I mean, we routinely get together with many of the stakeholders, perhaps we should invite you to one of the meetings. We routinely get together with many stakeholders. Maybe there's many more that I'm not aware of. This is Dr. Launer's full-time job. I, I spend less time, but maybe, maybe we are getting all of them, maybe we're not. But the integration is really challenging. Chief Cullen's team is looking to do some of that, bring sort of the whole services the city offers. I spend time in Baltimore County as well. They're also struggling with who's going to own this space. It more naturally comes from a Department of Health in the sense that it's global health, but the fire department are the ones who are out there in the communities, in the homes, in, in a little different way. So in a lot of times, it defaults to the fire department without particular directed funding. So it's a challenge.
So I'll just tell you, we do partner very closely with the Health Department. The fire department's plan and of attack for the opioid, excuse me, epidemic, it's a multi-pronged attack. We do naloxone training and distribution with Lee Behind. We do treatment with things like the stabilization center. We're trying to get the buprenorphine online. We do education with handout materials and things like, remember they did the Don't Die.org? We do outreach with people encouraging people. We're also working with, what's the health, healthcare on the spot is one of the very positive programs. They're actually, if we are out in the scene when we're working with somebody, a lot of times these people, like Dr. Nussbaum said, there's mental health, there's usually opioid, they're usually homeless. So we're able to link them with some real-time medical care as well with healthcare on the spot. We also do the opioid intervention team. We're an important partner in that, where they bring all the different people together from the different agencies to try to work together. And then overdose fatality review committee. And that's where they look at each individual death and see what we could have done different. So we're, we're doing a lot of things there. There can more be done, absolutely. But we do do quite a bit. You're more than welcome to come to see some of those, those meetings where we meet with people for that.
Appreciate that. And again, I think the coordination is key. Did want to go back to the opioid restitution funds for a second. To your point, I think this is a, like Medicaid and Medicare reimbursement is a challenge generally in this space of like, who's, who's paying for what? And I know the state has attempted to make some of the behavioral health interventions more billable that are not just like going to the hospital. But given that those funds are coming online for the state of Maryland and hopefully at some point for the city of Baltimore, and if you are part of the lawsuit, I get that. But maybe for Dr. Nussbaum, you know, how are we thinking about leveraging that opportunity? Because it seems like we should be aggressive in, I mean, we were ground zero for the opioid crisis. We still are. We should make sure we are using those funds effectively.
Yeah, I'm going to also defer to Dr. Launer. I just don't want to give you bad information. So I don't have a great answer for you right now. And, and I can ask Dr. Launer to circle back with you. Maybe email or offline conversation. I don't have, I don't have a perfect answer. We need all the funds we can get. So we, we should be in that space. It's our biggest problem, as the data shows. So we need more in the space and I'll ask Dr. Launer to reach out to you.
Appreciate that. Last question for me. Would you all support a safe injection site in the city of Baltimore?
We were looking at them for some time. I actually asked the police chief, I'm, I'm sorry, the fire chief from Philadelphia where they had started that. Because I, my initial thought would be that they would be very much against those. He told me it was one of the best things he had ever done. We're looking at it here and then it kind, it comes like, waxes and leans. I haven't heard much about it, but that's what a lot of the literature's heading towards right now.
What was, I guess, what is the holdup? I know New York has been doing it. I know, you know, we've, a couple, my colleagues on the council, we've had conversations about it. I'm curious, what would it take to kind of get there for us?
That's a, that's more of a public health thing. I would probably steer that towards the Health Department to, to, to pull all those pieces together. I know there was talk of it at one point and that was several, that was probably pre-pandemic, the last time I heard about that probably. So I know they were talking about it at one point, but with all the things that happened with the pandemic, it probably went to the wayside and something needs to be looked at.
And I know it does have to be at the state level as well. And so appreciate that. But just feel like this is a space where Baltimore could and should be a leader in. And so hope we're still aligning ourselves for if and when that happens. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for your work.
Thank you. I appreciate the really well-thought-out questions. I, I want to note, it sounds like there, there are a number of things that we are beginning to dive into here that involve other agencies. And I, I do think it's probably a good use of our time to bring those folks in and have a broader conversation in how all this works together. So I'll chew on that as, as we think about this LO and maybe have an opportunity for our next quarterly meeting to have health and B.C.R.I. and maybe others be a part of the conversation so that we can think about the full suite of opportunities and, and how we're tackling these problems. You, you guys have one step in that, but certainly the coordination before folks get to you or you respond to their crisis, I think is, is really, really important. So appreciate you. Thank you. And appreciate the work you guys put in. Is there another question?
Yeah.
Okay, sure. Councilwoman Porter.
She's got it. Nope, not working. Sorry.
Oh, perfect. Thank you. So I just want to reef, just add some additional context to Councilwoman Cohen, the safe injection sites. I'll start there. One, there, within those areas like Philadelphia, Boston, there is a whole model that goes into how those safe injection sites are developed, implemented, zoned, et cetera. I will kind of agree that, given my expertise and kind of visit to these sites, Baltimore isn't necessarily in a place to execute appropriately based on the current operations that we have within our fire department, our health department, and also just our public health sphere here in the, in the city. Not to say that we can't get there, but there are additional opportunities that we have to, that we have to really kind of think about along with like our mental health clinics, along with our PRPs that are in the area. This would be an added layer and burden administratively and operationally on our healthcare system and also like departments like the fire department. So there are, like, there is consideration, but there are other, there are other aspects that we have to kind of really think about thoughtfully within these communities before we kind of center and really include safe injection sites. Number two, with regard to a funding mechanism for, for, you know, funding these programs for the ET3, one of the, one of the areas that I know we had talked about before was making sure that we have a funding pipeline. Can you speak to where we are in the reimbursable rate process for community health workers? Given that, you know, the city of Baltimore had the, about 300 community health workers that were working during COVID, I'm wondering if there can be some sort of collaboration between like the fire department, 911, and the community health worker space that we can add these, kind of lay para-professionals, para-health professionals into the operation so that they can kind of take the burden off 911, kind of translating into like medical speak, what you were saying before, but also making sure that they provide those wraparound services needed from the department?
So part of the expansion with POP Health is a couple of CHW, Community Health Worker positions. To take a step back with the funding, a lot of the funding that we were able to do is going to expire in 1231 through ET3. That was that federal government?
Yes.
Where they were allowing people to fund for different things. Along with that, Maryland Medicare did agree to pay for some types of calls and some types of transports to alternative destinations, which is a positive for us. We're working actively to bring a couple of community health workers on. That's, the, the reason Population Health works is we have an established relationship with people. They're going to let us in the door before they let a health department person or policeman in the front door. That's our great, that's our area. We're good at treatment and reaching out. We're not good health, um, social workers. That's where we're trying to learn. That's the space where we need that linkage, that wraparound. We've approached the four major systems in the city, which are your major hospital systems. We need to have some dedicated time to be able to link somebody that lives in Life Bridge's air, area with Life Bridge, you know, in Hopkins area with Hopkins. We're in the discussion phase of that right now to be able to bring those together. And that space is a social worker, community health worker, that to be able to link them and get services we're not good at.
Do we have, so where are we in that process? Because the hospitals already have that infrastructure set up. They already have like a reimbursable code through Medicare and Medicaid. Like, where are we in that process with making that connection?
It's discussions back and forth. It's about, it's about money at the end of the day. It has to do with like urgent care centers. Are you willing to take anybody and anyone that comes to an urgent care center? It's those same functions with the hospitals. Some of the hospitals have said they'll give us FTE, full-time
Yes.
Support with that for so many hours. And that's what we're trying to look for. It isn't just the fire department's job to support this. It's the entire healthcare system in Baltimore City.
Yes.
And that's what we're trying to work back with. Hopkins, we've been in some close conversations with. Life Bridge through, through Jonathan Mole's, we've had some really close conversations. University, we're trying to get to a space where the ideal place and the future iteration of us is to be able to grab somebody, do a soft handoff, get them into the right system where they want to go, and then be able to gently pass them off, not just drop, you know, hot potato, get rid of somebody. We're in the preliminary discussion phase with that right now.
Okay. Okay. I'd love to be included on those conversations because, given my experience with CMS, I understand that we should be much farther than we are where we are in the city, given that we've been talking about these reimbursable codes for CHWs for like two years now. And it was an opportunity for us to kind of have that conversation two years ago and we, we should be farther along than where we are now. Lastly, I wanted to just kind of check in with the department about another funding opportunity within CMS's, the CMS Innovation, CMMI Innovation Awards. Care First just got $24 million to implement a program exactly what you were talking about. And so I encourage the department to kind of reach out to some of those research partners that have been awarded CMMI awards because those are innovation awards that really provide a foundation for the innovation that you're doing, not only within the fire department, but also within the city of Baltimore. So Care First is a major supporter within the city of Baltimore. I'm sure that there could be some thought there with how we can integrate most of our public safety agencies, primarily police, fire, B.C.R.I. into that pipeline so that we can truly provide citywide innovation. All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I, I want to make sure we get through this hearing to fire. Can you make it brief?
Very brief.
Can you talk a little bit about the, what's happening at the stabilization centers? Why you're dropping folks off and then you're having to go pick them up?
So there's a very strict guidelines for when we can go into the stabilization center. Let me take a step back. They're, they're predominantly run by nurse practitioners. Not all nurse practitioners are alike. Some are family medicine nurse practitioners, some are maternal health, some are emergency medicine. Sometimes if they don't fall into a set criteria, like if the blood pressure, heart rate has to be 100, if the people come in and they're 102, they're kicking, they're making us go from a double transport. We'll go to you. Oh, it's two points over. And they're making us go to another area. But really what we're having a problem with for, it isn't only the people that we're taking there. The hospitals are actually, one of the problems, they're not getting enough people from us. So the hospitals are direct discharging to stabilization center. Some of those people, like Dr. Nussbaum said, are complex patients that have mul, you know, multiple problems. And sooner or later, there's going to be something with a, a blood pressure, some kind of a concern, and they're calling us to get out. It's not only the stabilization center. It's a Gadenza group. There's a couple of Gadenza groups up Northwest. So it's across the board. And we're trying to look at it and correct it. And we're at the table with BHSB, who'll actually oversee that, to see what we can do to clean that, that process up.
So if I understand you correctly, it's, sometimes the hospitals are calling you all to say, no, this person needs to go to the stabilization center. Or is it that you're, you're transporting someone and trying to figure out what's the best place to place them? And then because they're in a substance abuse crisis, take them to stabilization center first?
First they have to agree. You got to understand, first they have to agree to it. So I can't just grab you and take you. I have to say, you know, look, you've fallen this criteria. I want to take you to here. Yes, I want to go there. That's great. Then we have to go over the medical piece. A lot of these patients are complex. They not only have problems with substance abuse, there's probably some kind of medical underlying problems, mental health. So they're not always falling inside of that strict criteria. That's the patients we take. The hospitals, like Dr. Nussbaum's, if they have somebody that's appropriate, they'll discharge them. Would you use Uber or Lyft? They use Uber or Lyft and they transport people to the stabilization center. If they don't arrive in the right set of criteria, vital signs, or they're going to call us to move them out of there because they're not safe. They're going to make them go back to the emergency.
Some people get sicker than can be handled there. They involve, they require IV resuscitations. Maybe they're vomiting a lot. They're getting very dehydrated. They don't do, the ERs have more capabilities. They mostly do oral medications with the stabilizations. And sometimes they just need a few hours of IV therapy. That's not possible. A lot of people develop chest pain as part of their withdrawal syndrome. Chest pain is a very challenging diagnosis to work through without the benefit of laboratory studies and time. They send those people to the ER. I, I did a one-month dive into look at all these people and it's, there's really no one answer. It's a complex need of, their symptoms are worse. The patient wanted to go to the ER because they wanted to go to a different center. And that's their mechanism of getting detoxing somewhere else. Come to the ER, we'll send you Penn North, you know, for one reason or another. They don't like it there. They are having complex mental health needs and they do have mental health care at the stabilization center. There's a variety of things that draw people to the ER. There's no, I think a lot of it is severe symptomatology and then other medical complaints that come up that can't quickly and safely be addressed there.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're gonna, if, if there's more to follow up on, can you make sure to meet with the Councilman at the end of the meeting? I want to make sure we move along. Chief Wallace, take it away.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Thank you, sir, for having the fire department here today. Chief Wallace, the interim fire chief for the Baltimore City Fire Department. In the interest of time, I will quickly just introduce, excuse me, the remainder of the command staff that's here. Chief Dante Stewart from Operations, Acting Assistant Chief Tom Tosh, Safety Member Services, Assistant Chief Christopher Case. You've already met Chief Mattz, Executive Assistant Chief, Mr. Kensington White, Deputy Chief of Training and Education, Lori Shiloh, Deputy Chief of Safety and Risk Management, Mr. Carl Knight, Director of Human Resources, Mr. Jamar Rain, Director of Finance, Mr. James Fisher. I also have Ms. Kim Washington here with me, Legislative and Equity Officer, Dr. Shante Hart from IT, Deputy Chief Kaliela Yancey, Professional Standards Development, Deputy Chief Goodwin from Logistics, Deputy Chief Sean Eames, our Fire Marshal, Deputy Chief Anissa Sawyer, Lieutenant John Cashin, and you've met our amazing 911 director, Ms. Reddick. Each, sir, each Assistant Chief has put a lot of time building their slide decks into the overall presentation. I would respectfully request that as we advance the slides, that each chief do, you know, in the interest of time, do their presentation for you. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chairman Conway, ladies and gentlemen of the city council. For the record, my name is Thomas Tosh. I'm Acting Assistant Chief for Safety Member Services. I have Human Resources underneath as one of the agencies within Safety and Member Services. On the slide, we have a breakdown for our agency demographics. We have a total of 1,537 employees at this time, both sworn and civilian. So for our new hires, we put together for fiscal year '23, to give an example, we have what we hired in, in 2023 fiscal year, as well as what we have remaining active. So for the dispatchers, we're, we're even. We hired one. We, we still have one. For the MT firefighter classes, we lost 18. That was due to the cycle through the fire school from which I think the entire city council participated in last week with the training and everything. Unfortunately, everybody doesn't make it through. There is certain mechanisms set up through Deputy Chief Shiloh's group where they do retesting. They try and make every attempt as well to keep those individuals within the training program that they can. And then it goes down the line for the different hires that we had for that year fiscal. Currently vacancies, we have EMS for entry level, we have 87. For suppression, suppression entry level, we have 88. And that's for the suppression entry level. That's in addition. We, we have a That's in addition, we have a class, two classes at the Fire Academy right now of about close to 80 people. The numbers are a couple of slides down. We don't have training positions allocated at this time. So our recruits that are actually at the Fire Academy are also occupying additional vacancies. Those are our two classes at this time that Chief Shiloh has at the academy with a prospective graduation dates of November 23 and April 24. The operational date was data from, it got polluted in there. Disregard that, please. We currently have a group of recruits that are going through the PAT testing phase and the interview phase that will create a new hire list for us. We're working with our HR for Baltimore City Fire Department, as well as City's DHR. We have a prospective class beginning in December of '23 and another one mirroring up to the one that's going to graduate in April so that we can continue. We're estimating 50 recruits for each of those classes as well. Again, this is the current list of prospective hires that we have. We had 1,431 that applied. 1,018 were invited. 413 did not qualify. That could be due to any number of mechanisms during the application process. They weren't providing information. They didn't meet the requirements, various items. Attending the written exam out of the thousand that were invited were 620. We had 519 that passed. We've been conducting PAT testing at our Fire Academy with the assistance of Chief Shiloh's academy personnel. So far, as of the 12th is what this data is, we were able to test 289. We had 210 pass, who are now taking interviews. They started on Monday. We did 100. We're doing another 100 today. Members that did not pass that ability test, they're set up with a program where they can come back and practice. They get mentoring type scenarios going on and then they're set up for a retest. These PAT tests and interviews will be going on to the middle of October so that we can consolidate the entire list and get as many new prospective hires together on a list so we can start having classes. This is just a daily snapshot for what the Fire Academy does for our suppression units in the field. In addition to teaching classes and having rotating classes out there for new recruits every day, we have a Monday through Friday schedule that Chief Shiloh keeps onboard with her instructors as we rotate our suppression units through the academy on a daily basis to have the fire operations training, the Fire Officer and Command Simulations, which is geared more towards our leadership corps for battalion chiefs and captains that are due to be promoted to battalion chief or captains that act in that position quite often. Then on Wednesdays, she provides a truck operations class where all of our units go through for that, for new innovative techniques for truck operations, as well as introducing engine companies to different aspects of forcible entry and what have you. The initial bailout training is still ongoing for our members that were not able to take the initial classes to get certified to wear the harness that we have issued. Chief Shiloh can speak to that later on if there are any questions after the presentation. And then Fridays, we're doing our bailout recertification, which is, again, is the harness that we've all been trained on. We have attached to our gear. It's a permanent fixture on our gear. Once they get certified, they have to have that on them at all times. It allows an escape mechanism should a firefighter become trapped on the upper floor of a building. So this is just an additional course and catalog offerings. This is other classes that they have in addition to training our new recruits on a daily basis as our classes go through. So you'll see with the Fire Academy, there can be anywhere from 40, 40 to 100 recruits out there training at any given time, depending on the class sizes. And in addition to that, we're doing that daily operations training. Plus, we have mirrored spring and fall classes for our promotional exams that members have to have in order to qualify for those exams. They offer them on a mirrored format, they're MIFRE classes. There's also other courses that are offered as requested that are listed there. And then there's some newly developed classes like Fire, Advanced Firefighter Removal, the Human Performance in High Stress Industries, the Building Construction for Fire Service and Fire Dynamics. We're reinforcing that with our members, given the circumstances that we're faced with, with the current blight that we have with vacant structures and codec structures to promote our safety and our critical thinking processes so that our members aren't reacting like the moth to the flame when they show up. They take a second, they take a breath, they start analyzing the situation in front of them. It's, it makes everybody safer. In addition, in addition to all of that, we do annual hose testing for every engine that's within, within the Baltimore City Fire Department. DDC recertifications, return to duty evaluations. They have their special projects, Camp Spark. They do new apparatus familiarization, as well as other various activities that are required from the fire department. So what I'm trying to say is our academy is one of our busiest groups within the fire department, if you didn't know that already.
And, sir, I'll jump in real quick before Chief Case takes over. You know, we all, we all know our fire academies is gateways into the fire service, right? I mean, that's where all our cadets come through. But what Chief Shiloh does, in addition to that, and many other fire academies do it, they're also that professional development link where we can continue. We know it in EMS as continuing ed. We send our providers to the academy for ConEd, it's structured, it's scheduled. That's where we are in fire suppression as well. It's that constant development, that constant reinforcement of critical thinking, muscle memory that goes on with Chief Shiloh's team and units from the field. The last three slides specifically speak to things other than a cadet class. And I think that's, you know, that's very important. When you, when you look at that Fire Academy, it is, it's extraordinarily dynamic out there. She's always got something going on, her instructors, she's got adjuncts. So there's a lot of things that really go into that, other than just a recruit class.
Good afternoon, Christopher Case, Assistant Chief of Community Support Services, Community Risk Reduction. I first like to go through logistical issues with the fire department and start with apparatus. Approximately a year or so ago, we met with Department of General Services and came up with a plan for apparatus replacement. What we want to do, we're not quite there yet, is have the oldest piece of the large piece of apparatus, the engines in the trucks, maximum of 10 years old and first line service, and they go into reserve status. EMS transport unit between three and four years. With everything we have on order right now, we feel we can reach that by 2024, 2025 and keep this replacement going. And that would replace an EMS transport unit every three, three and a half years and every large piece of apparatus approximately nine and a half years if this plan is kept up, it's fully funded. But we're still going through the COVID issues right now with supply chain delays and labor shortages with the manufacturers. We went from approximately a year to a year and a half with a large apparatus production times. Now we're up to, up to 40 months with some, some of our, some of our manufacturers. And EMS transport units is 36 to 40 months. And the main part, main reason for that is nobody can get the chassis for the vehicles. We're still having problems with them. And now with the UAW strike, it's really going to set us back a lot because nobody's making them. Apparatus on order right now. These are, the ETAs on them, what's ordered and they're still, most are still a long way off. They're also listed, sorry, is FY fiscal year when they were ordered. Right now, we have 12 engines, five trucks, and 28 medic units on order. The 28 medics will basically almost replace our entire fleet all, you know, when they start coming in. This doesn't include FY '24's apparatus. With the master lease, we're looking at purchasing two tower ladders, two tiller trucks. We're in the specification phase of these right now. And with the City Council appropriations from this year, which is also going to be supplemented by William H. Amis funds from the state of Maryland, we're looking at two engines, one air flex unit, one specialized dual agent foam unit to put out special fires, and one's field communications unit. So recently, we were notified from the Insurance Services Office that we attained our Class One certification for, the Class One rating for fire departments. They're on a rating schedule of 1 to 10, obviously one being the highest. We first got this in 2015 and we were just redesignated. The higher the rating is, equals lower insurance premiums to businesses and homeowners. We're the highest rating you can get. There's only two other jurisdictions in the state of Maryland to have this rating. And we're one of only approximately 400 in the country out of 39,000 jurisdictions that are rated. This is based on, one, it's based on our partnership with the Department of Public Works for the water supply, to put the fires out, apparatus deployment, apparatus staffing, our training, and 911 call taking and dispatch to meet the NFPA 1710 standards. So this is a, this is a pretty big honor for us to attain that and actually keep it going too, so. Okay, the condition of our stations. We received a $10 million grant from the state of Maryland to construct two new fire stations, Engine 14 on Holland Street and Engine 27 on Minnesota Avenue. Engine 14, in, since we've received this grant, has been designated a historical landmark in the city. So we can't alter the station, we can't alter the exterior of the station. So we're going to use this money to fully renovate the interior of the station. Engine 27, we're in the design phase of it now. The design phase is more complicated because the Committee for Historic and Architectural Preservation is putting it through a review right now. We've already had one hearing on it. The design phase has to be, instead of just building a new station, the design phase is, one, keep the facade and build around it. Two, keep the current station. Or three, tear it down and build a new station. I explained to the committee when I testified in front of them that this area is underserved on Minnesota Avenue and we really need EMS transport units up there. Possibly EMS officer and a battalion chief better deploy our services. We're unable to because of the size, it's a very small station. So when we get the designs back, we're going to go back for another hearing. And we're going to see where we're going to go from there. Station renovations, we received $25 million from ESPP money, Medicare supplemental money to renovate at least 14 stations. We can only estimate how far the $25 million is going to go as the, as we go along. Right now, Engine 2 on Light Street is undergoing renovation. Engine 52 on Wood Brick Avenue is in the design phase. And then the other stations listed are, that's, that's, we're going to, we're going to go that far at least. Engine 14, we just started talking to DGAS and we're going to start the design phase with that. But the historical and architectural preservation people have to be involved and they have to approve all of our designs. Now I'd like to turn it over to Director Tanya Reddick to discuss 911.
Good afternoon, once again, City Council members, fire chief and employees of the fire department. I'm the 911 Director, Tanya Reddick, and I'm here just to speak briefly on some of the things that we're actually doing in the 911 Emergency Call Center. And this is only for 911 call taking. Some of the things that, some of the software, some of the things that we're doing do affect Baltimore City Police Department dispatches, as well as our fire dispatches as well. And so is other partners, as well as 311 and DPW. But this is strictly for what we're doing in 911. But like I said, some of those services do extend to other agencies as well. The city of Baltimore 911 system has taken a significant leap forward towards next-gen 911. We're handling approximately 700,000 emergency calls year to date and producing an average answering time of 83% within 15 seconds. 911 has incorporated several tools to empower managing calls in emergency situations. This includes substantial technology upgrades, improves interoperability, and a more efficient and effective call handling process. 911 has the capability to offer residents, visitors, and neighboring jurisdictions of Baltimore a 100 language translation service, which I mentioned earlier today, which minimalizes, if not eliminates, the need of third-party language line interpretation. This service also propelled 911 into the realm of advanced technology with artificial intelligence, AI, for non-English speaking detection and advanced ASL, American Sign Language interpretations, like I said, which I explained earlier today to Councilwoman Reynolds. Furthermore, 911 is enhancing emergency response clarity by offering callers a media enhanced feature and situational awareness for public safety professionals. We are incorporating live streaming, text messaging, and GPS location accuracy, enabling 911 specials to connect with callers more effectively and share their critical data with first responders before they arrive at the scene. What that means, we are actually now doing live videos through 911. So if you was to call us in an emergency situation, we do have the capability of taking over your camera once we ask you to by sending you a link through your phone. And you can stream live, so we can actually see what's going on on that scene live. And one of the features that we do have with that is the ability to share it to first responders. We just had a recent conversation with BPD. That vendor came down, spoke with them about the sharing feature. So as I'm look, as one of my 911 specialists is looking at it, we can dial someone else's number into the system and they can live stream as we're looking at it. So you kind of know what's going on before the response happen. You know, before you're actually sending a response there. So that's one, another technology that we're offering. Another thing that we're offering, when I say the GPS location accuracy, is not only we're doing the X and Y, which is the latitude of the mapping, but we're now looking into doing the Z, which is the height. So it can give us this building, this floor, this room. Which is, if you think about it, for situational awareness, that's really good to have active shooters. We have a lot of high-rise, we have a lot of hospitals, we have school systems. Also, I'm working with GIS, the city GIS, to give us imagery, which is a 3D imagery of inside buildings. So we know, like I said, the school system, we will know it's this floor, this room, and Ms. Jones' classroom. And we can see it, and it also will help EMS for like ADDs, Fire Department for fire extinguishers, different things that's located in the building. And we can kind of direct the caller to those resources that they would need. Lastly, next-gen 911 provides a more robust transformation of the call handling process. It creates opportunity to integrate systems with surrounding counties through the sharing of CAD, which is our computer aided dispatch system, data via our CAD to CAD software. The ability to work remotely utilizing the 911 terminals known as 911 in the Box represents a significant advancement in emergency response technology. So our CAD to CAD, we've actually partnered with a lot of surrounding jurisdictions. And when I say that, this is the universities. So we partnered with Morgan, UMB University, Hopkins. I think Notre Dame. A lot of them now have access to our CAD system. So if anything happens in their area, they get it real time. And they can dispatch at real time, real location to that situation, opposed to us using the phone system, calling them over, letting them know what's going on. So we've had that going in for the last couple of years. And we're looking to expand it throughout the state. And that's going to be a statewide project where different counties are able to see different counties' CAD system. And that helps with ritual aid and situational awareness things. And then some of the council people who actually went to Mako was able to see 911 in a box where we're able to do 911 remote call taking, not only here in Baltimore, but we was actually taking live calls in Ocean City, sending them back via the CAD system. And they were dispatching medics, fire department, as well as police from here, without them even knowing that we were somewhere else using that system. So this technology is not only So this technology is not only alleviates 911 from mere call-taking, but also plays a pivotal role in saving time, reducing efforts, and most importantly, saving lives. It achieves this through greater context, clarity, and certainly more made possible by the enhancement communication system. Thank you.
Now I'd like Director Dr. Shante Hart to speak on information technology.
Please come up to the podium, and you can press the button on the right, and it'll activate the microphone. Please state your name again for the record and title.
So. In addition to...
Try taking another one here, just, just so folks online can hear you. Yeah, that's fine. There we go.
So, good afternoon. In addition to what Director Reddick described as what's happening at the 911 call center, once those calls come over to fire dispatch, we follow NFPA 1710 standards as far as dispatch is concerned. We also, and right now, we're sitting at right about 85% for dispatching calls within 64 seconds, and we're at about 95% for dispatching within 106 seconds. So once that comes, once the calls come over to us, our dispatchers follow medic and fire dispatch protocols. And then on top of that, we are making sure that we are on top of our quality assurance. We have a quality assurance lieutenant, and she is making sure that our dispatchers are regularly trained. We're a little understaffed right now, so we're working with HR and DHR to fill vacancies that we have. We try to staff, we try to have eight, a total of eight people on staff for each shift. Right now, majority of the time, we're somewhere between five and six. A lot of times, we get to six by overtime, or getting others to stay over and work. So we're working to fill those vacancies.
I'm Fire Marshal Deputy Chief Sean Eames. Just going to briefly go over some of our duties. Officer of the Fire Marshal is responsible for providing fire prevention, fire investigation, and educational resources to the, to the City of Baltimore. Our core functions are conducting fire inspections for new use and occupancy permits, annual operational fire permits, as well as we do inspections for the Department of Social Services. We conduct fire inspections for new fire protection systems. We also conduct plan reviews for new buildings and fire protection system. One of our most important features is that we deliver fire safety talks and we conduct fire drills. Our fire investigation unit conducts investigation of building and vehicular fires. Lastly, we review event permit applications, which comes from DHCD and DOT, as well as we provide fire inspectors to cover large-scale indoor events and outdoor events, such as carnivals, fairs, festivals, concerts, and events such as the Ravens and Orioles games. In fiscal year 2023, we performed 13,635 fire inspections, 2,080 plan reviews, 88 fire safety talks and fire drills, as well as we conducted 546 fire investigations.
Deputy Chief Carl Knight, Office of Safety and Risk Management, going to talk about line of duty, fire ground injuries. So this is a comparison for every district for the fourth quarter 2022, with the map that shows where the injuries were occurred, whether the residence was occupied, unoccupied, vacant, Codex, or undetermined or other. Next is the fire ground injuries for the first quarter of this year with those same breakdowns.
What is Codex again?
So Codex are buildings that we have, that the members have gone out, and they have determined that they are unsafe for internal firefighting, internal structural firefighting. All right, and the next would be quarter two, the injuries for second quarter of this fiscal year with the same breakdown. These are the injuries broken down by quarter with the same numbers as you see based, they are 22 to 23, with the colors coordinated. And then finally, these are the breakdowns of vehicle collisions for quarter four, first quarter of 2023, and then second quarter of 2023.
All right, good afternoon, everyone. Last but not least, this is Chief Dante Stewart of Operations. So I'm going to start off with a breakdown of our day-to-day. Turn that back for a second, whoever has the control of the slide. All right, so basically, operations ran by four shift commanders that oversee the personnel that work out of 939 neighborhood fire stations. Those units include six battalion chiefs, 35 engine companies, 17 truck companies, one heavy rescue unit, specialty units such as hazmat, fire boats, Special Operation Command units, and several fire boats. Have on-shift personnel complement of 238, 238 members on each shift that, that's one So next, we have our weekly schedule for the units during the Monday, well, seven days a week. As you can see, every day, it has something on it. For Sundays, we start off with training. Members are trained to, the newer members are trained to drive, pump, work the aerial ladder, so that way they can be proficient and approved to act at that capacity. Also, that goes on day and night. We also have battalion training each day. Battalion-level training is when the whole battalion get together and go over new policies, new procedures, and just train hand-in-hand. During the warm months, that is done outside, such as fire ground evolutions, setting up ladder pipes, hose lays, and et cetera. And during the cold months, they would just get together at a station for classroom training. On Mondays, we have hydrant inspections. Each hydrant in the city should be inspected at least twice a year, every 180 days. On Tuesdays, we do building inspections. Units are sent out to do at least one building inspection in their district. On Wednesdays are our unsafe vacant surveys. That would be our Codex sweeps that you get emails about that we're doing in your district. That started October of 2022, and that is basically when we started putting up the placards to identify Codex locations. On Thursdays, it's another day we do building inspections. Fridays are make-up days for days that you do not get that completed for your unit. And Saturday, we do, conduct safety sweeps where we do home visits. We'll go out, knock on doors, make sure you have work and smoke alarms. And we also started a partnership with Red Cross. Red Cross actually comes out with our units and do these home visits with us as well. So they take their volunteers, they rotate throughout the city, and it's, it's been great partnership so far. I want to touch on the, add to the daily activities. In addition to all of this, every day, our members at seven o'clock in the morning, they start off checking over their equipment, making sure they have their radios, making sure their SCBA work, making sure they have their flashlights, their radios, thermal imaging cameras. They're logged into the account, logged into the motor dab terminal, so that way they're accountable for being on duty. And drivers are checking over the apparatus, making sure the pumps work, the aires work, and also making sure that the station is, is up to par, clean, everything works in the station. So this is on top of what they are assigned to do that day. So in a nutshell, you saw the Fire Academy schedule for training. Those units who are not scheduled to go to the academy, this is what they're going to be doing, as opposed to just sitting around waiting for calls. So next slide, we're going to go to the daily activities. We're going to be reporting on quarter one, I'm sorry, quarter four of '22, and quarters one and two, but this compilation here is a total from January 1st until 9/17. So we've had a, we've had 30,929 addresses that had 35,688 inspections. Of those 35,000, we had 27,119 smoke alarms inspected, and we installed 2,690 smoke alarms. The Codex Ray location that I mentioned, we identified 2,917 location and installed 4,102 placards. Unsafe Initiative is basically another word of the Codex. That came up because the computer program could not recognize, or differentiate between the two, so we just compiled both of them together. So with the unsafe locations, we had 3,255 of those added into our computer system. So we identified additional 3,193 vacant locations, and of those, of those vacant locations, 1,132 were unsecured. The graph to the right pretty much breaks down the numbers by battalion, districts, council districts, neighborhoods, and target enforcement zones. Target enforcement zones are five high-priority districts that the mayor's office identified, so we work in conjunction with BPD, Department of Housing, DPW, DOT, liquor board, permits, and basically, we just canvass five, just five zones to identify vacant dwellings, arses, homicides, overdoses, anything that's considered to be a high priority from City Hall. Next call, next slide. All right, so this is a breakdown of the suppression unit call volume and by the quarters. So the orange, the orange represents fire suppression-related calls. That could be smoke alarm going off, popcorn in the microwave or dwelling fire versus EMS calls in blue. So for quarter four, we had a total of 37,000, 37.7,000 calls. Quarter one, 29.7,000 calls, and quarter two, 34.6,000 calls, for a total of 102,000 calls.
Chief Stewart, I just...
Yes, sir.
I know we got 17 slides to go. I just want to be cognizant of time.
I can, I can abbreviate.
Thank you.
All right, so I'm just going to go with the totals. So for fire responses, all three quarters, we had a total of 1,288. Total fires, 522. Working fires went to 76, and when we say working fire, that means a fire that has progressed greatly, where we're going to call and ask for resources to come help put that fire out. Of those, we had 25 that went to two alarms, and one third-alarm fire in that reporting period. So this next slide is our EFF times. Again, Director Hart mentioned, we follow NFPA 1710 with a standard calls for a 80-second turnout time and 240-second travel time, which is equivalent to 5 minutes and 20 seconds response time total. So the first, first engine arrives approximately three minutes, three and a half minutes, second engine, four minutes, third engine, five, four, six minutes, and fifth engine, which is our last engine, they have an average time of seven and a half minutes. That could be varied due to the fact that other units could be on medic calls, waiting for a medic, so units are being pulled from further away to cover that assignment. And same's going to be for the first quarter and quarter two. Those times fluctuate slightly for each, for each minute mark. So for the fire response time, Chief Matt gave our EMS response time, so I'm just going to focus on the fire. So for quarter four of last year, we averaged 5.7 minutes response time, 5.4 for quarter one, and 5.4 for quarter two. So the fire response times, basically, this is how long it would take for our units to respond. This graph is pretty much a more drawn out of what we, what we just showed you. And same for the structure fires. And again, Chief Matt spoke on EMS. So going to talk on the turnout time for suppression calls. Again, you all did the fire ops opportunity last week, so imagine what you all did last week, getting dressed, doing that in approximately 20 to 30 seconds, and being on a unit and out the door. So this is going on...
I couldn't do that in 30 seconds.
So this, this is going on sometimes 10 times a day in a 24-hour shift for our members, especially at the busier companies. So that's, that's our time for the turnouts. And same thing, get dressed, you're out the door 10, 15 seconds after you're getting dressed, and honestly, it used to be quicker than that before we had seatbelt mandates. You got dressed, and you got dressed as you were driving down the street, and I'm guilty of that myself, so. But we're going to go ahead over to fire incidents by council districts. So for quarter four, we had a total of 157 fire incidents in all 14 districts. 100 of those were in occupied dwellings, seven were unoccupied, 43 were in vacant dwellings, and four Codex locations for quarter four. Again, we started the Codex program October of '22, so that, this is why that number is low. And same thing, as the winter months come on, you're going to have more fire incidents due to people using candles. Some folks, they lose, they lose electricity, they use other means of trying to provide heat or light, so you'll have the stoves running. So in quarter one of this year, we had a total of 206 fires. 120 of those were in vacant, occupied homes, eight were in unoccupied. We had 66 vacant dwelling fires, nine of those were in Codex locations, and three were undetermined. And for quarter two, we had 173 fires, 118 in occupied dwellings, 11 were unoccupied, 43 vacant, nine Codex locations again, and one undetermined. So I'm just going to sum up the last three slides for quarter four. We had a total of 28,205 EMS responses and 18,380 fire-related responses. And again, those could be, those fire responses, not all fire calls. It could be popcorn in a microwave, electrical outlet, light fixture not working, my light, my light bulb just went out, my smoke alarm chirping. So for quarter one, we had a total of 25,547 EMS calls and 15,242 suppression calls. And last but not least, 28,796 EMS calls and 16,421 suppression-related calls for quarter two of this year. And that concludes my slides.
That, that's everything?
Thank you. All right, I'm going to open the floor to questions. I had a couple as you guys were going through your presentation. Chief Stewart, just we, because we just came off of some of what you discussed, I'll tack on to some of those questions that popped in my mind as we were talking. One of the things I didn't, I didn't see here, and I don't know if I missed it, but do we have any metrics on fire deaths where we are this year and how it compares to previous years?
We had 16.
16.
This year, last year was eight.
And any sense on why we're seeing a significant spike this year?
I'm not seeing any trends, it's just, just how the deaths go, they go up and down, but we're still less than 20, which, we get to 20, then we should be worried.
The other thought that I had, I was looking at some of the maps, maps on slide 91, 92, 93, otherwise. I was noticing some of the Codex buildings, the stars are right on top of each other. I'm really curious if we're finding that some of that is associated with arson, and maybe...
I know your question, sir. What was your question again?
Are we finding that in those instances that, you know, we're finding arson incidents, are we seeing those incidents rise up more often or any, any trends there regarding our vacant buildings, especially ones that are not structurally stable?
Yes, there's a significant amount of arson is associated with the buildings being vacant. But once we make them Codexes, that amount of arson goes down. So once we get those buildings boarded up, then we're not having arson. That's the, that's the issue to get all, all these vacant buildings boarded up.
Got it. And then another thought that Chief Stewart brought up. We know that every year when it gets cold, people start lighting fires in their homes if they don't have electricity. We also know that when folks get their electricity cut off, in order to light their homes, they're going to light candles. I'm curious if there's ever been any thought put into, because I know we have the proactive teams that go out there to check fire alarms, to, to check other, you know, other things to make sure that we reduce our fire deaths and people are safer in their homes. Have we thought at all about a program to proactively identify those that lose, lose power and maybe work to provide lighting, lamps or something like that? Or, you know, heat systems of some sort? I don't know. I'm not sure if there's ways to think about that. That might be a little bit out of the ordinary, but.
So we did have a program where BG&E provided a list of addresses where service was turned off and we went out.
If you could speak up, just.
Oh, sorry. No, we reached, we went, we went out, reached out to those locations, gave them fire safety pamphlets and just also gave them information to city services that could help them get their power restored and just let them know what's available to them. So I would have to honestly say we would have to revisit that, see if that program's still in effect, but I would say that stopped maybe 10 years ago, if I'm not mistaken.
And I, I wonder if we can require BG&E to do that before they shut off power, noting that it brings a significant risk to the neighborhood if someone is now setting open fires in their homes unnecessarily. So just a thought there. I wanted to talk a little bit about the apparatus and then I'll hand it off to my colleagues. We, we touched on the delays that we were having, supply chain issues. I'm really curious on where we are with our current fleet. Out of percentage, percentage of vehicles that, that we have, how many are still operating, operating well? Or are we seeing some of our vehicles are down in, in, you know, currently?
We're still having the basic problems we were having last year. And the other thing that compounds it is when we talked about the supply chain and labor shortages, it just doesn't apply to the manufacturers. It applies to the local vendors. DGS right now is down, I think, 30-some mechanics. They're trying to hire. The parts, we, we've had parts that take six months to come in, a simple part that we, you know, normally would be on the shelves. So we're working as hard as we can with vendors. We've contracted with another fire apparatus vendor, maintenance shop that's helping us out with some of our apparatus to get it going a little better. And we're working really closely with DGS on getting the parts stocked beforehand, which is expedited some of our apparatus going, going back in service.
Question for the administration, Nina, I see you back there. Do, do we currently stat DGS?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I don't believe we currently have a separate like city stat evaluation for DGS, but they are included in the performance plans. I'll have to get back to you with some additional information, but I can reach out for it right now.
Okay. I, I asked that question because I think this is one of those things where DGS would know this is an issue for themselves. You guys wouldn't necessarily know, but then you're impacted because you don't have vehicles, because they don't have staff. And they, they don't have staff maybe because of something in HR and it's one of those kind of rolling problems. And on an operational perspective, you guys can't, can't fully meet your needs. So I, some of that, of course, is purchasing new vehicles, but there's always more that we can do in working up the chain and make sure that everything else flows well. So I have more questions, but I'll hand off to my colleagues. Councilwoman Porter.
I did have one question about 911 dispatch and then I'll transition to the fire marshal. Director Reddick, I wanted to check in on the response times for 911 callers to actually pick up a, to pick up a call. In, in the district, we've been noticing that some of the residents have indicated waiting three to five minutes for emergent situations. What is, I, I understand that there's a workforce issue related to that. What are we doing to identify alternatives and strategies so that in those type of emergent situations, that they're not hearing that long message that we're triaging appropriately?
Actually, thanks for asking that question, because it's something that we have been dealing with for a very long time now. And act, one of the main factors in it is, one, staffing. You have to have people in the seats to answer the calls. And just like Director Hart said, as far as dispatch, we are low. I am at the, one of the lowest points as far as staffing right now. I'm due to possibly hire a class to come in at least of 20 around October, November, but even though that's not going to offset the problem now. Another issue is, is the overreliance of the 911 system. A lot of people are utilizing 911 when there are other resources out there. 211, 311, 988. It's tons of resources out there, but people don't know about them because that information isn't given to them. So they, first thing that comes in your head when you have an emergency is what? All you feel as though it's an emergency is, I'm calling 911. So we have to learn how to shift those calls somewhere else to keep our lines open. So like I said, it's a lot of different factors that go into it. We would love to answer every call that comes in within one second. Standard is we have to answer them within 15 seconds. It's the standard that we deal, that we have to comply with through COMAR and NINA, which is the National Emergency Numbers Association. These are standards that we have to comply to as well as the states, because they do fund us a lot, they, a lot of their funding come from the state. So if we're not in compliance, then it jeopardize our funding. Like I said, I would love to actually answer every call that comes in within those 15 seconds, but right now, we're having a hard time doing that because of some of the variables and some of the challenges that we're facing. So if we're getting, if we're receiving those calls that are not 911, we're trying to direct them to where they need to go. We're speaking to the other agencies to let people know, hey, this situation is a non-emergency versus an emergency. And then also I need your, you guys' help, always ask for it, with letting people know the difference between 911 and 311 and really understanding the difference in the systems and how they work and what calls need to be filtered through. That's all.
Thank you so much for that very thoughtful response. Two follow-up questions. Are we in compliance with that 15 seconds?
At this present time, I am, as, to date, like I said, I'm at 83%, which is kind of falling under, it's the 17. So no, not right now, but in due time, summer. We already know calls go up in the summertime because of the situations that happens. And then also because of, like I said, my staffing. So right now, no, I am not in compliance and I have no problems with saying that because that means I need help.
Yes.
And this is what this is for. So I, I need someone to help me with that, to shift that so we can get those calls answered. So no, at the present time, I'm not, I have not been in compliance probably like for the last couple of months, especially because of the uptick of calls.
Okay, thank you, Chief. That's actually a high priority for me if you could have a, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
One of the alternatives that I really want us to really leverage is making sure that we have those paraprofessionals like CHW's LPNs that are integrated within the 911 center so that we are reducing those calls. I really appreciate all the work that you have done in 911, you know, getting the technology there, but we cannot overshadow the people aspect of, of these particular situations. And it's something that, you know, I'm really laser focused on over the last few months, how we can really engage our lay and paraprofessionals within some of these pipelines so that we are kind of taking the burden off of people and we're triaging efficiently, appropriately, and also making sure that we triage to the right departments. That kind of leads into my second question regarding triaging into our public safety agencies like Baltimore City Police Department. Over the past few months, we've been, it's been a very interesting dynamic because some of the triaging has not been correct. And I'm trying to figure out where we are, where, where the lag is. So these are urgent situations such as traffic violations or even just connection, just response times, and I'm trying to figure out where kind of the breakdown is, where they're not appropriately triaging from 911 to the public service, to the public safety agencies. And there have been a considerable amount in the past three months and I, they're not showing up on CAD. And so there are significant deficiencies that I think are in the CAD system, but I'll leave that for another time. But can you speak to how you all are coding those non, you know, those non-emergent, emergent to our public safety agencies and kind of where they fall in that, in that workflow?
So let me start by saying when it comes down to actually the coding of the calls, it always starts, it begins with 911, but some of those calls not only is coded by 911, it is coded by 311, which is our non-emergency unit. We both utilize the same CAD system. So no matter if my 911 specialist entered the call or 311 agents entered the call, it all filters through CAD. It, it doesn't change the response from police, it's still, is a code for service. So if 911 enters it versus 311, it's still going to have a police response within a certain amount of time. Now, the coding on it, it all depends on what the situation is. I can't speak in reference to what you're speaking to because I don't know it, so side conversation once again, so I can kind of home in on those particular incidents. But when it comes down to it, the code is, it's always life over property. So those calls that will actually involve life, which is shootings, stabbings, carjackings, those type of things have a higher priority than actually furniture being stolen off your porch, your house being broken into with no, with no suspects, information, that's lower priority. So that's how we always look at it and that's like the easiest way to explain it, life over property. So anything that would involve life, that you would actually need police to have an emergent response, then that's going to get a higher coding than actually property.
Okay. And also, could you speak to me about, could you just share a little bit more about when there are elevated amounts or quantities of calls in one particular area and how that should be escalated, whether it is escalated and how it is escalated?
So just in general, calls, just, I'm just going to use this hypothetically, but I use with a lot of examples. If we, right, at this moment, right now, we're here and we have an accident, a bad accident on 83, how many people want to call? It's going to be a lot because people passing by, the people that are involved, everybody has cell phones, so you're going to have a lot of people calling for that incident. And we're looking at the time, it's 3:25, school is getting out. Then you have a big fight that happens down at the inner harbor from the school that's just letting out. How many people want to call with that? So now you've got two major incidents happening and you think about how many people are actually reaching out because of those two major incidents. And then you think about something that might happen over in West Baltimore. And then you have your normal calls. I can't breathe, I might be having chest pains, I just came home and my car was stolen, you know, so you have those other calls that's filtering in based on the major incidents that's already happening. So when it happens like that, usually we enter the call, every call that comes in, we have to enter it. We have to get as much information that we possibly can to let the first responders know what's going on out there. So what we do, we enter the calls, it's entered in for dispatch. Normally dispatch give those incidents out, but then they also take one initial incident and then start duping all the rest of them to that one. So you won't have a call log, log of multiple different calls on your screen, but they're supposed to relay every additional information to the officers that responded.
So, okay. And Mr. Chair, this is my last question. I'm just trying to procedurally prepare my brain for this. How is it escalated up to the department level? So with that, with all those calls coming in, is it ever escalated up to duty officer, Baltimore City Police Department? What is that process there between the two agencies?
So the thing, we all sit in the same communication center.
Ah.
You can hear it. You know when stuff comes through.
Okay.
Like I said, always open it up to visits. So when you actually come in 911, you see how the structure is. You actually get to see here exactly what's going on and you see the collaboration between all agencies. It's not only 911 on that floor, it's 911, it's police dispatch.
Oh, wow. So all of them sit in that same floor?
We're all on the same floor. So you've got 911, police dispatch, you have school police, you have DPW, you have 311, you have, and sometimes, like I said, fire communications is there. You have the true. So you have several different agencies that sits on this emergency call center floor because it's a collaborative effort. Sometimes we need to use all agencies to handle one call. So if you hear a fluctuating calls in, hey, 83, and they're giving this one between 83 and North Avenue, 83 Cold Spring, then you kind of already know and then you hear the dispatcher's dispatching. So it's always a police sergeant present on the floor, always. It's always enough situational awareness under BPD, always a police sergeant present, it's always police supervisors, there's always 911 supervisors present on the floor. And then you have other ones, you have the operations manager, sometime I come visit the floor. You have different people walking through, so you can kind of tell what situation is going on based off of what you're hearing in the background. It's a live dispatch center, real time.
Thank you so much for that.
You're welcome.
Thank you and thank you for your questions, Councilwoman. I, I would suggest, and I had the opportunity to do this back in the day when, when I worked in the mayor's office, but I did kind of sit in with 911 dispatch, 911 dispatch and 911 call receivers and with 311. They're all in the same room, they get very interesting calls.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I, I just want to, in full transparency, the reason why I was going through that workflow process is to really understand the dynamic between the three agencies. There, in other hearings, we have heard that there was a breakdown between communication between agencies and I really want to understand kind of the spatial dynamic, where people sit and, you know, just really have that understanding of the workflow in preparation for our hearings next week. Thank you.
I could add to that, it's no barriers, it's no walls that separates us. So you can actually hear people giving CPR over the line. I can hear dispatch, actually dispatching calls. If they have a signal 13, I can hear it. I can hear that signal 13 being called out from that location and vice versa. If I have someone on the line counting one, two, three, one, you can hear that. So it's no walls, no barriers that separates the agencies in the 911 center.
Thank you. I would love to follow up to do another kind of sit in. I think that'd be really cool to see some of the new technology and how it's actually playing out in the 911 center.
You're more than welcome.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to commend all of you for the really great data today. Really, it's great. So now I have all these questions about all the vacant properties. Not surprising, right? So this is really great data to understand a little bit more about how the vacant properties are really impacting your work, frankly. I mean, the fact is that almost half of your injuries in the last two quarters are because of vacant properties is astounding, astounding. So I'm wondering if somebody can tell me a little bit more, to the extent that you can, of what those injuries were? Was it a collapse? Was it a structure failure? Was it, could you tell me a little bit more about that?
Yes, ma'am. So our injuries and vacancies over the last couple of quarters, the majority of our injuries are minor in nature. Most of them are, so our injuries are categorized in five different categories. Overexertion, which is sprains and strains, burns, laceration contusions, exposures, needle sticks. So those are the five. The majority of our injuries overall are those overexertions. Those overexertions are where someone may have been pulling a hose and they're pulling the hose line up the steps and.
Oh, we did this.
And, and sprain, sprained the back or, you know, sprained a shoulder, things of that nature. The major, that's what the majority of our injuries are. We did have a couple of members that were injured, that, one that fell through a floor. It was a hole in the floor and he fell half, part of the way through the floor. But the majority of them are, are those overexertions. We've had a couple of burns, but that's where the injuries come from.
Yes, we pulled a hose and it was difficult.
We, we barely pulled the hose.
I got pinned to the wall, I got pinned to the wall too because, you know, so it was, I have to say, that experience was super intense and I'm really grateful to have had that experience. I also felt like a badass afterwards. I was like, yes! So anyway, it was, and so we, I'll speak for myself, I have a new appreciation for all the work that the women and men of the fire department are doing. So it's interesting because also even though some of the injuries could have happened in other places, it's just the fact that we have these vacancies that are adding to your, you know, to your burden, basically. And that, you know, that, that makes a big difference in terms of how we're. And that, you know, that makes a big difference in terms of how we're doing this. So I appreciate that, getting that, getting that detail as well. And I just wanted to make sure that the codexes are the most dangerous, so you have a different approach when you're going in. So that, that's probably why we're not seeing as many injuries because you're actually being much more cautious as you enter the codex. And then the vacancies are still designated with a VBN, they just may not have been designated codex. Is that correct? Okay. So you're going in, basically, because that's what you have to do with a codex, you're approaching it a little bit differently.
So as we know, we have a large homeless population here in the city and what may appear to be a boarded up vacant house, you pull the plywood back and then somebody that has completely moved in. So if it's not a codex and conditions dictate that you can safely go in and try to mitigate, that's basically what we're teaching our members now through the officer development, the battalion tech program, is basically getting the mindset of looking at the big picture. If you have fire on all three floors, like blowing out like a blowtorch on each floor, nobody's going to survive that. There's no point even trying to go in. Versus fire on two floors, fires at the upper level, ceiling, top of the window sill, all right, you still have a chance to go in there and make a rescue. So that's the difference with the codex versus the vacant, vacant dwelling fires. So again, you've got to have credible information that there is somebody in there or could possibly be in there and that's going to dictate our operational moves in regards to that incident.
Right. And then Chief Ames, you had talked about the fact that some of these, or a lot of these are actually arson's. Is that correct with the codex and the vacancies?
Yeah, I just wanted to actually clarify that point. So there's a lot of fires that occur in vacancies, but that may just be to Chief Stewart's point, that's somebody homeless that's living, they may not be intentionally setting that fire. To me, arson is somebody that has a criminal motive in doing it. And there are arson's in vacancies, a lot more, but some of those fires aren't arson in nature, they're just accidental.
Can we get the breakdown of that, please?
Sure. I don't have that data with me, but I can
Of course, but yeah, if we could, I would be interested in that. I mean, I know that there might be people just sort of throwing stuff around and, but it's also supposed to be an intent to do it, like we had on 31st Street. So the, yeah, I'd love to see that data, if there's a way to do that, because also I think that what people are fearing with vacant properties also is that there may be people who are either stealing the BGE from elsewhere or lighting the area up just to be able to find heat because we do have an affordable housing crisis in our city. So we want to make sure that, you know, there's a lot of ways that we need to mitigate this, but I'd love the data on where, what the fires in terms of breakdown, if it was an arson, if it was just regular fire, were there squatters, you know, and I can work with you on what that breakdown would look like.
I would just like to add one thing to that point. A lot of the vacancies, we don't actually, by the time we don't go inside, if it's an extra operation, we may not even go inside of that building
Understood.
Do an investigation because it's not safe for us to go in there. So a lot of those won't have a cause per se.
Understood. Okay. Yeah, yeah. Well, and particularly with the codex, you're instructed not to go in unless, yeah, exactly. Although I would be really interested in the data from two years ago as well, but that, well, that's a whole nother thing. So thank you very much, I appreciate that. I look forward to working on this, getting this data. Thank you.
Councilwoman Cohen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Chief Wallace, interim Chief Wallace, and your team. Do want to big up my colleague's point about Fire Ops 101. Thought it was a great experience. Props to President Fannin and Koster. In addition to it being physically taxing and exhausting, it also, I think, was bonding for those of us that went. Like it just felt like, we don't do a lot of off-campus stuff together and that felt really special. So I thank you all for making it that way. And it was just really well thought out and absolutely exhausting, so thanks for that. I want to ask about Workday, which continues to cause problems for your workforce. And as we think about how do we not just grow our population of firefighters, but retain folks, to me, it is a real challenge when I'm continuing to hear from rank and file folks that I got a promotion, the system didn't update in Workday, and then when it did update several months later, it didn't adjust for my back pay. I'm hearing this still really frequently and we've been working with this system for a while now. And so I think this might be both a question for you, possibly Nina, for the administration or the city administrator's office, because I know obviously finance is deeply implicated as well, but it remains a real concern and I think it's hard to have the growth and retention conversation when we're not paying people what we owe them.
Yes, sir, absolutely, and thank you for that question. Just since I've been over there, I've, my eyes have been open to that situation as well, much more so than what they were in emergency management. You know, I left a population of eight in emergency management, I've taken on the fire department. I fully agree with you. I would say that my initial findings were that there were, there were system issues, but there were also human cost issues there. We are now, I now have Chief Tosh over in what was a vacant assistant chief spot that has oversight over human resources as well as finance. And one of the first things I did was, was look into the amount of grievances that were on file. And there was, you know, there was a significant amount of grievances there. I think we just got more this morning, consistent with issues with back pay. So we're resolving those as quickly as we can and as efficiently as possible, but we do still have a ways to go. Having brought Chief Tosh over now, I think, I'll defer a little bit for him to tell you a little bit more because he's a little more intimately involved, but I do acknowledge that there are issues there, there are backlog issues with pay grade changes, promotions. I fully acknowledge that, I'm aware that they're there.
Good afternoon, thank you. I was actually in a mediation meeting this morning with the Labor Commissioner's Office as well as President Fannin, Wayne Robinson, the captain in Safety and Member Services, as well as Mr. Quentin Herbert and several of his staff regarding some issues that 964 and 734 actually got mingled in there as well. A lot of the issues that they were presenting with the mediation had already been taken care of. There are some hurdles. Quentin Herbert, as well as his staff, have been made aware of the issues with the promotional aspect and the drag on the follow-up with the retro pay and the payment. We're trying to get it within that two-week window to make sure that the money is actually moving in. It's a struggle. I'm not going to say it's great. I've had some of the horrors of Workday as personally, being a deputy chief of the shift commander's office at the time when it was first instituted. I will say, being patient and allowing the system to get work through this new format with the way the fire department works, we're making strides, we're making improvements. People are getting paid. We have a lot of human errors as well. We have a stipend program for our special operations hazmat MICRB instructors. The majority of the issues there were found that the actual humans didn't enter their stuff in properly. As of today, I believe just about every stipend that was due the first week of August has been paid to everybody that was due that. So they're aware of it, DHR, they're going to try to get better, they know some mechanisms that they thought were in place that weren't. They're going to talk amongst themselves and work towards it. We're liaising with them. I have Captain Robinson working with them daily. He's able to pull the reports, get the data that he needs to show, and we are moving towards making sure that we're better at what we're doing and the program's working better. But there are issues. You're absolutely right, there are issues and we do need to make sure our folks get paid. It's very important.
Yeah. Again, I mean, I think we're now at the point where we can't say it's a new system, we're learning, I mean, it, we just have to pay folks and we have to pay them on time and we should be able to anticipate when someone gets a bump that, you know, they get the bump and then whatever back pay is owed. So I hope that we are, I'm glad to hear that that conversation is taking place, but I think if we're really serious about growing the department and retaining the women and men of this fire department, we really got to get that stuff right quickly.
We're on board 100% with you, Councilman. There's, there is no fight here against what you're saying. We are doing everything we can. The hurdles that we're experiencing right now are either a human factor or it's a glitch with the programming system that has to be worked out. Director Rain could probably speak more in depth if he wants to get up to the podium on some issues that he's seen since he's been here. He's been an intricate part as well with Captain Robinson working through the problems. He's been wrangling data, he's been physically getting lists from people and actually looking within the Workday program to see that some of our problems are a direct result of individuals not following directions that were given to them and therefore not getting a payment. With respect to the promotional issues, that's separate and we're working towards that. There are some items that are programming issues that they were unaware of with respect to leave and accrued leave, and we're working through those as well.
Good afternoon, Jamar Rain, Director of HR. So yes, Chief Tosh is correct. So we are trying to work through the issues. One of the, one of the big dilemmas with Workday is, let's say, one person makes a move, you now have to move everyone else after that because it's a domino effect. If one person moves into a assistant chief position, you're now moving the battalion chief, you're moving the captain, you're moving the lieutenant, you're moving the, everyone makes a move, so it's a domino effect. What seems to happen with Workday is when you make one change, when you try to replace that one particular person into that position, the system doesn't automatically know that information, which means now that new person that goes into that position, you have to input all of their information all over again, which, again, it's a domino effect. By making one change, you're now making 10 changes for that one different promotion. What happens with, with the fire department is that we don't normally do, we don't normally promote one person, it's always a group of people, which means it's now hundreds of changes that need to be made in order to correct it, which then causes a backlog, which then causes an issue with back pay. So as we move through the process, we're able to get them paid with retros and back pay, but it is, you know, we just had a promotion where I think it was like 15 people. That's now going to, it's now going to take us weeks and months in order to process them because the system, and the system doesn't do it that particular day. You literally have to wait, you make one change, you wait a day, you make another change, you have to wait a day. So it's a continual process that we have, that we're dealing with.
Understood. I'm not going to belabor the point, just know that we need to close that gap because it is having a material impact on the morale within our department. Want to ask my last question about
Councilman, before you go, can I make a request
Sure.
To the administration that we just follow up on MOIT on this exact issue? It seems like a whole lot of work for what should be B-SIT, I'm sorry. I still live in the old days. Can we follow up B-SIT to see what we can do to rectify this particular issue, if there's anything we can do? Thank you. Go ahead, Councilman.
One of the issues that was discussed today with Director, Quentin Herbert, was that the Workday system, when it looks within the organization, it's looking at an organization chart, much like we function. Unlike prior where we could just draft an order and through ADP or the other payroll system prior to that, just make everything happen and then push the stuff. Now, like Director Rain was saying, it's a systematic, line-by-line move. And then there's other people involved from other agencies with DHR where everybody has to move back and forth. There's like electronic conversations back and forth where they accept it, they approve it, they submit it, then it goes to the next level. So it's a very time-consuming process, but there is no reason why it shouldn't be able to be done within the two-week cycle for the promotion, other than the mishaps that we've had so far. Sorry, I apologize.
Noted. Thank you for that. And Chief, wanted to ask you, you know, encouraged to hear about improvements around the apparatus and our purchase, power and all the rest. I did want to ask specifically about the Stricker Street report. Obviously, there's a number of recommendations in that report, you know, one of the more horrific incidents in the history of the Baltimore City Fire Department. And so I'm curious where we are in terms of progress? How many of the recommendations have we been able to accomplish? What are we working on? Like how are we moving that work forward?
So I'll defer to a couple of the assistant chiefs as far as progress prior to my arrival there. What I will say is, I, the battalion chief that led the BOI is in the process of retiring and he's kind of handed off a lot of information to another battalion chief that was on that Board of Inquiry. I met with him two weeks ago and he and I both did a deep dive into the specific recommendations that were made there, what his thoughts were as far as progress and where he thought that we need to pick up the pace a little bit and maybe develop some, I'll call them subcommittees, to really start looking into some of the recommendations and the feasibility with same. I just had a conversation with him, it was an email conversation within the past couple of days, asking for a priority list of recommendations as far as the remaining list of recommendations that were provided by the BOI, as well as some recommendations for personnel who could function more so as an SME, if you would, in that particular space of recommendations.
Sorry, an SO?
Subject matter expert in certain areas. So there were things that revolved around radio communications. Well, you know, we would, we would want some people versed in our 800 megahertz system. There were things, fire ground operations, there were special operations. So where things haven't been done, or maybe they're still in progress, I want to see the right people in the right places to provide the most favorable outcome to recommendations that have not yet been solved, if that makes sense to you. As far as what's been done prior to me getting over there, I'd have to defer maybe to Chief Stewart or Chief Case to go a little more in-depth with you there.
All right, Councilman, so since January of '22, we've made significant leaps forward and trying to prevent that from happening again. One of the very first things we did was come up with the codex program to identify those such structures. That same very location had a similar fire several years prior to that. So place was already compromised. So again, we knew that the initial version of the codex was not received popularly throughout the city, so we came up with a, tried to revamp it to make it a more public, public accepting way of identifying these locations for our members. Therefore, you go around town, you'll see a diamond-shaped red placard with a white background as opposed to a big giant X. We consulted with other departments, see what they were doing to mark these type of structures. Some of them just spray painted a white X on the building or a red X on the building. So that's, that was one of the first things. Second thing we did was started looking at our Special Operations Command, changing the way we were doing training, getting our members exposed to more training, getting them funding for more training and just pretty much get them more certifications that they hadn't had before. We got them, sent them out for specialized collapse training. We started, now we're at a point where our mutual aid partners, District of Columbia, Delaware, Frederick County, Howard, Baltimore, and Rundle. Last week, we just did a trench class up in Emerson Village where they're all coming into the city to see how we're doing things. And as well as, we had collapsed classes in some vacant dwellings this past February where same thing, all these other jurisdictions came to the city to see how we're training our special ops folks. So special ops was another big item. Accountability was probably by far the biggest. We initially started off with adding a six-engine to an assignment and that six-engine main focus was accountability. Two members were going out back and two members going out front. It was going to help the incident command attract the resources on scene. However, that stretched our members even thinner, so to speak. So one of the first things, once the previous administration changed hands, battalion tech program. It was a recommendation of numerous fire reports, so right away, we looked into that. of numerous fire reports. So right away, we looked into that and we started a pilot where we just detailed a lieutenant to assist battalion chief, lieutenant senior firefighter. And basically there, that battalion tech for that battalion chief now help on fire ground with accountability, finding water sources, calling in extra resources, and most importantly, keeping accountability of the units on the scene. With that program, we have command boards set up. We've started to have our commanders identify command posts, something we didn't do in the city unless it was a true large-scale incident. So now we identify command posts. We have technology to where we have radios that can identify the member who is not answering their radio when we do accountability reports. And also the program on the mobile data terminals that the battalion techs are using. If a unit does not, if a person does not identify or respond to a PAR personnel accountability report, that icon on that terminal is going to flash indicating that Engine 14 Portable 2 has not responded to the PAR. So that's some, some of the things we've done since Stricker Street and in regards to the report. Other things we've done, we've increased our RIT training. We've increased the RIT assignment. Basically, when a mayday is called, incident command will normally cause for additional alarms for personnel. Communication is taught now that if a mayday is called on an incident, that I automatically dispatch in a RIT task force, which is essentially an additional alarm. So that function of that additional alarm is to just come and supplement the initial on-scene written unit and help with mitigating that mayday. Our fire officer training, that started, it was already in the works, but it started after Stricker Street, as mentioned earlier. That officer training is exposing our members to better decision-making, taking that time out to look and get the big picture and again, make better decisions on how to combat a certain incident in front of them. So Baltimore City, we're known as an aggressive firefighting department on the East Coast. People come from around the country just to come work here because they know we're going to go in. Well, we had to change how we do things. And these are some of the things that we've done since January of 22. Again, to try to prevent that from happening again. I just assumed the role less than three weeks prior. I work with those members. They're like family to me. So I took it personal and just like everybody else in this room and everybody else in the department, you know, to prevent this from happening again. So.
Appreciate that, Chief Stewart. And we'll just say, you know, the safety of our department is critical and we got to make sure we're using best practices. And I agree with you, there's sometimes, I think, a tension between the culture of just aggressive, hard charging, go in, save people, put out the fire, but also need to make sure we're doing it the right way and that we're not putting our own folks in danger as we save other people's lives. So appreciate that. I think I'm going to request for a subsequent hearing, Chief Wallace, a written report, progress report on where we are on the recommendations so that we can just see that. And if we could get it maybe, I don't know, a couple of days before the next hearing, that would be appreciated. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you all.
Thank you, Councilman. I want to go back on a question I asked earlier. I just don't know if we ever got a specific answer because I put a lot in the question. With regard to the apparatus, I was curious what percentage of our apparatus is in service right now?
Right now, as far as first, as far as our first-line units, we're, we're down one truck.
Okay.
We're hoping to get that back in the next 24 hours. Now, all of these aren't the first line. They're, some of them are reserves that we, we carry. So, but yeah, but we're only down one truck right now.
Okay. So all, all units that should be on the street, with the exception of one, are on the street. Good to know. I asked that question because I think it's really important and we didn't get much into this today, but just from a matter of safety for our officers that are out there responding and having backup and otherwise, we just want to make sure that we always have enough. That also goes for EMS, EMT. And then the other question I had was around hiring and our human resources. Actually, it's not about hiring. It's about our attrition rate. In a given year, what is our attrition rate? How many, how many folks do we lose typically within a given year?
Excuse me. For our vacancy rate, the pre-pandemic, we have, we were at about 4% for suppression for vacancies, 7% for EMS. Right after that post-pandemic, we had moved up to an 8% suppression and we were up to 16%, more than double for EMS. And currently, we're at 7% for suppression and 26% for EMS. EMS is, is faced with a struggle at this time due to the surrounding jurisdictions hiring. There, you, you have better pay. You have situations where the service is not as heavy as it is within the city. To combat that, we've actually just got the permission and the ability to institute a recruitment and retention bonus for EMS division personnel. We're going to start that this fall, the beginning of the winter, with the next recruitment class that comes in for EMS.
That kind of answers the question. I could probably do some math to figure out exactly what that answer is. What I want to get down to is just understanding year in, year out, roughly how big is our incoming class need to be in order to keep steady or grow to the point that we need to be for the department?
For the class sizes?
Yes.
We're, we're struggling with that at this time. We, we're setting up, like I said previously, a class to start in December when the current class we have graduates. That's going to be 50. Then the following class is going to pick up in the spring when that other class graduates. It's kind of a struggle for the fire academy, given the facility that they have with, with the ability to have X amount of people there. Chief Shiloh, do you want to talk about your struggles with having three classes versus two classes?
Before we jump the chief shallow, I want to maybe just squarely answer this point because I don't want to get too long-winded if we don't have to. I just want to know how many people we need to bring on force every year in order to make sure that we're at least treading water and optimally gaining some, some folks.
As of right now, we're at 88 for suppression. Plus, we have in class right now, close to 70, 55. So you're looking at 130 right now vacancy. We don't have a way to gauge. We, we can estimate that we're going to have an attrition of 50 to 60. There's rumors abundant in the field right now that this January, we're going to have a mass exodus of anywhere between 50 and 150 people, which is going to cripple us if that happens. We've been having classes, every, every time we have an opening with one class graduating, we're pushing another class in with the maximum amount of people. So we're hoping to have at least a list of 300 when we're done with this recruitment and we want to put all of those through and we want to begin another recruitment drive starting in January to hire. So we're looking at, I want to say 80 a year, but it could be more. It could be less. It's hard, it's hard to gauge. And unfortunately, given certain circumstances, we're, we were never set up as our agency is they are, like with the state, state police, for example. They know three years out, how many people they're going to lose through their retirement program in a way they have it set up. With, with the way the, the FMP is set up, if, if I've got my time in and I want to retire and I feel like retiring today, I can come in. There's, it, it's very hard to estimate that data. I could tell you 80. I'll stick with that, but I don't want you to feel like I'm lying to you because at any moment it could get worse or it could get better.
I totally appreciate and realize that this is inexact science. I just want to, you know, when we're thinking, we're talking long-term planning here, you know, we want to have at least a target that we're working toward. And I don't expect you to have a perfect number, something in the world. I, I don't know if it's 120 people or if it's 50 people, but that, that difference is-
My class just hit 28 years on the 18th.
Okay.
So, and, and my class, there was two other classes off my list and then the FPA program. We're, we're a young department. That benefits us. But one of the downsides is being a young department, the younger individuals are looking everywhere. There's no loyalty like we had when I came in. Like, I came in, I was offered jobs at BWI. I didn't want to go anywhere else. I want, I grew up in Baltimore City, lived in Baltimore City. That's where I wanted to be. And, and with the, the new generation that we're dealing with right now, a lot of them don't think like that. They, they, they think differently.
You said something really important around the, you know, there are rumors of a mass exodus potentially coming. I'm really curious if we know anything about why. Is it, you know, folks are upset? Are they stressed out?
I believe it's years of service for, for, for the people that are approaching that, that time where they hit that 32-year mark or better.
So retirement eligible folks.
Yes, sir.
Got it. That's really helpful to know. And I, so that is, that retirement eligibility is perfectly predictable because there's an exact date when we know folks are going to be eligible for retirement. And I would, to some degree, we should be predicting that out anyway in a year, how many people are eligible to retire and how many people we roughly lose just to other departments or who knows?
Yes, sir.
So I think that'll be really important for us. Thank you. I appreciate that. I'm going to go with 80, give or take.
Yes, sir.
But I, I think it's important for us to not, not forget that number and to continually talk about how we're trying to hit that number at least in applications that make it all the way through the system. Because that, that, that's the tough part, you know?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
The pandemic crushed us, just like it did everybody else around the country. And we've been playing catch-up since then. And at one point, when I, when I came in and not, not long after, through the early 2000s, when we would have a hiring process, we would get upwards of 3,000 to 5,000 candidates. This time around, we got 1,400 and only 1,000 of them. That's why we're already looking at restarting and pressing the restart button again in, in January, February, because we know we're going to exhaust this current list once we get moving. So that way we're prepared for the next round of classes that we can have. We, we want to have as many qualified candidates available and ready to come in.
We're going to keep Chief Shiloh busy.
She's amazing.
Sorry. Major.
I think one of your problems also is that we see a lot of people who are already in the department, working in EMS, applying to come into suppression. So you're losing your EMS members to suppression. I would say two classes a year, at least 50 a year. And then we also, we don't get all those people through. You might have 100 people that we start in fire school and you only get 80 out. So we average about 80% coming out.
That's good to know.
With the retention and recruitment bonus for the EMS division, that's one, one item that we looked at. And that requires, when they take the bonus, that they have to remain in EMS division for three years. So that gives us an advantage there where we were at disadvantage before. So that the individuals who act, actually opt to take that bonus, they're guaranteed to be there for three years and then they have that segue to come into the suppression, suppression aspect. And that could give us a gauge on how many people we need to actually move into EMS and hire for EMS specifically.
Once we put that new list out there, please let me know and I'd be happy to share far and wide. And I'm sure all my colleagues would as well.
I have a quick follow-up to that.
Please, go ahead.
I have a quick follow-up to that. I also noticed you have one slide around the diversity of the department. And so I do know that there were several people who chose not to answer, but it would be important to also, you know, think through how to do that recruitment so that people from, who look like the rest of the city are also part of the department. And you may need to, you know, put some different languages on your applications just to be able to make this work. We, there's, there's lots of people looking, lots of people that are capable. I don't think any of us are going to volunteer right now. Unfortunately, we already have jobs. But, you know, you never know.
They pay better.
But I think just to make sure that, you know, we're, we're looking everywhere.
Totally agree with you, Councilwoman Ramos. Director Rain heads up our recruitment committee. He can speak on that if you'd like some information on that as well.
Yes, the director and I have talked about it, I think, briefly. Yeah, thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing no further questions, really, really appreciate you guys. I appreciate the ton of work that you guys have put into this and the thought. I look forward to doing this regularly and we'll find a groove here where we don't have to talk through all this stuff. But, you know, we'll refine it down to the things we need to discuss here in this meeting. And I hope you guys found this valuable as well. With that, this hearing is adjourned. Thank you.